Testing, testing. All right. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order our Wednesday, November 8th, 2023 Board of Education Special Meeting and ask trustee Mangi Melli if she would please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, take it away.
Okay, all right. Good evening, everyone, and allow me to give a very brief superintendent's update. Yesterday, we had a very productive superintendent's conference day on Election Day. A lot of professional development and parent-teacher conferences took place. I want to thank a lot of our own staff, including our Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, who volunteered to translate through a lot of yesterday. So everyone that volunteered to translate, all the technology tools, staff, colleges that help support the work, I want to thank everyone for making it a very successful day. Our principals huddled first thing this morning. The principals responded that everyone that needed translation services were able to avail themselves of it, and it was a very successful day. We had last week, our last for the fall, our new educator professional development series, which was facilitated by Dr. DiSella Lopez but organized by Maria Meyer. So thank you for all of that. And again, I had the ability to stop by and listen to a whole group of really enthusiastic new educators who were really enjoying their -- exhausted, but totally enjoying their teaching experience, which I think is fabulous. Our cross-country team wrapped up their season with remarkable performance at the Section 1 Championships, so we had a number of personal bests. And this week, our 29 Austing High School Science Research seniors sent out their Regeneron papers, so good luck to all. Very exciting and I don't know why they're being cranked there, as students were rushing to get those STS papers in there. We had a very special support staff members who received certificates for perfect attendance during the course of the '22-'23 school year. So congrats and kudos to all of those who did that. And I also want to thank our Austing High School students for creating clean baskets sponsored by the Austing Elks Lodge for my brother Vinny Project and Order of Veterans Day, which is being recognized this Friday. The schools and offices will be closed. And our Austing High School drama production of Play On takes place next week. Please mark your calendars and purchase tickets if you haven't done so, 11:16 to 11:18 at 7:00 p.m. in OHS Auditorium. I had the ability to drop by a couple of sneak practices, and it looks like a great show. As part of my superintendent's update, I've asked Dr. Anne Deely, our Director in All Things Equity, just to share some important highlights about the work we've done around anti-hate, bias reduction training, and the different activities in a proactive manner. So, Dr. Deely, why don't you come up to the podium, okay? And you can rest your documents there while you're -- just to give a brief overview, I had the opportunity to talk to some parents who may have called me, and I thought this would be a nice opportunity to share. Thank you, Dr. Deely.
Thank you. So first, our work most recently began with a group of staff at AMD to brainstorm responses to the discovery of hate symbols last year. And first and foremost, we thought it was important to offer support to students and staff who are experiencing harm. Dr. Lopez and I just recently discussed the need to continue these supports as well as communication about them. I also want to thank Michelle Casey, who's been -- who's our AMD Social Studies Coordinator, who's been a wonderful asset and partner in this work, to build on what students learned during an assembly from Holocaust presenter Rochelle Greenspan. Social Studies teachers, again, under the leadership of Ms. Casey, developed lessons to provide great appropriate background knowledge about the Holocaust. They also viewed a webinar with survivor Mark Shunwetter with all their classes in varied amounts. They watched specific parts of the webinar. And again, Ms. Casey facilitated the creation of social studies units to educate students about the Holocaust as well as bias in general. Again, I have linked anti-bias social studies units. The Social Studies Department also developed a glossary of important vocabulary. Ms. Smith, who was also a part of our action group, developed an avid -- for avid classes of social-emotional learning and specifically self-management lessons, again, to be used in avid classes to teach students alternate behaviors. We found that a lot of this language was being used when students were frustrated, and we really wanted to teach them both replacement behaviors and replacement language. Last spring, we also, as a result of this action group, Ms. Bly facilitated our National Honor Society students to create announcements to educate the AMD community about the contributions of Jewish Americans as well as Asian Americans during that month. And that was something that developed, continued through the rest of that year, about -- of the year, about announcements, equity announcements. Also, the Anti-Defamation League led anti-bias training for a group of 30 students last year. It was just a half-day, as well as a half-day for staff. We're excited that in December, we'll have 30 students trained for over two days for the full peer leadership training.
This year, Dr. Deely.
This year, in December, yes. There was also a virtual, as we looked at a particular cohort, there was also a virtual summer assignment offered for rising ninth graders to complete a virtual summer module on antisemitism. Again, as I mentioned, transitioning into the fall. Again, we planned with Mr. Hock the ADL World of Difference Peer Leadership Program that we'll run this year. Again, it'll be a two-day institute for our middle school students. As I'm sure you know, AMD held a Unity Day in October and participated in corresponding activities. I'm also excited to be taking seventh graders next week, who will participate in the Middle School Human Rights Institute at the Human Rights and Holocaust Center. And our very own Austing resident Jean-Claire Cottonhor is -- she works at the Human Rights and Holocaust Center, and we've also been working together to -- that she is going to help provide a unit and a learning extension for the Middle Ages unit in ninth grade. We also want to build upon the speaker that we had last year, again, who was Rochelle Greenspan. This year, we're looking to bring Marion Blumenthal-Lazan, who's the author of Four Perfect Pebbles. Also, at some time, I hope you will see Principal Langley's virtual assembly and address to the high school students and the high school community. She just did a really beautiful job talking about stomping out hate and taking -- all taking personal responsibility and really just inspiring everybody to, again, to stomp out hate. Our district equity team met on October 30th. Again, we had with the inclusion of student representatives from Roosevelt, AMD, and OHS. We also discovered the hate symbols, as well as just the elevation of hate language and bias language, and we brainstormed different ideas that the district -- that student equity leaders will take back to their respective buildings. Building equity teams have also been planning sessions for our school professional developments that support educators to engage in age-appropriate responses to biased language. We also, on Tuesday, just had a TA workshop, also regarding equity and supporting students and their identity. Upon this suggestion, as Superintendent Foxalter mentioned, that we did have a parent discussion recently, and one of their suggestions was to reach out to an interfaith council. And I was able to discover we do indeed have BOMA, which is the Briar Cliff-Austing Ministerial Alliance. And we have reached out and begun some very initial conversations about how to partner with them regarding ongoing efforts to fight bias in Austing and the broader community.
Build awareness, understanding, and continuing education, particularly at home and in families, and to have a coordinated effort. Thank you, Dr. Deely.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the update.
All right. My last piece for my superintendent's, based upon feedback from the Board of Education, or input, I should say, I did have a conversation with Kathleen Witt, so I took the liberty of putting on the agenda tonight a proposed resolution for board discussion on Be Smart: Secure Gun Safety. And I'm looking forward to a robust discussion. I took the liberty of adding some national language, some local language, and I had Kathleen Witt look at it as well. So again, up for the board to discuss and decide for next steps. It educates, it makes aware, and then it directs me to do certain things to help educate our families and students. So I'm looking forward to a great discussion on that this evening. Right? That's my superintendent's update.
Great. All right. At this time, I am going to recognize that we have our wonderful demographer, Ms. Graziano, in the audience, and she has a very long drive back after she provides us with some information. So I would like to take a motion to move up item 2.3 on the agenda to discuss it now.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ascension. Welcome, Ms. Graziano. Nice to see you again.
All right. And as Barbara walks up to the podium when we had our initial conversation, Barbara also does schedule building on the secondary level, so we had a lot of fun talking about conflict matrix, singletons and doubletons, and scheduling, you know, comprehensive high schools with program and periods and limited space. Like, no space, actually. But anyway, so thank you, Barbara.
Good evening. Thank you for having me. It's nice to be back in your beautiful community. I used to come every year until COVID, and then for several years did these presentations remotely. So it is nice to be back face-to-face. We'll start by looking at the demographics within the district. And first, we'll take a look at the resident population. As you can see, there was a gain of 3.6% or almost 1,200 people between 2000 and 2010, followed by a more significant gain of 8% or approximately 2,700 people between 2010 and 2020. This slide shows you changes to the age structure of the resident population. And there are two segments that are significant, the first being the preschool segment, which is those residents under -- children under the age of five. And that has been decreasing from approximately 6% in 2000 to 5% in 2020. There have also been decreases to the young adult population. In the middle of the slide, that's the 20 to 39 age group, which comprised about 32% of the population in 2000, but that has declined now to approximately 26% of the population. However, there have been significant increases in the senior population. That would be the 65 and older residents that comprised 12.8% of the population in 2000, but that has increased to more than 17% by 2020. And these changes are reflected in the growth in the median age of residents in the district, which was 39.5 years in 2010, but has grown to 41 years in 2020. This slide shows you changes to the resident ethnic breakdown over the same period of time, 2000 through 2020. And as you can see during that period, the two most significant changes have been in the white segment, which has decreased from approximately 57% of the population to about 41% in 2020, while the -- there have been significant gains in the Hispanic population in the district, growing from approximately 22% to 39%. Next, we'll take a look at the foreign-born population within the district, which has remained at approximately 30% of residents or almost 11,000 individuals. This compares to New York State, where foreign-born make up 22.5% of residents, and Westchester County, where the foreign-born make up slightly more than 25%. And I just want to note, this is the latest available data from the census, the 2021 estimates. And of course, since that time, in the last couple of years, there have been increases in the immigrant population, which are not reflected in that 2021 data. And what we're seeing is that many districts are seeing increasing numbers of foreign-born students, which is presenting a challenge for many districts because they now require additional space and resources to meet the needs of this growing population. Next, we'll take a look at births. This shows you Westchester County births over the period of 2001 through 2021. And during that time, there's been an overall decrease of more than 21%. And then this shows you births within the Austing School District for the period of 2003 through 2021. 2003 is the first year available for school district births. So if you look to the left-hand side of the slide, in 2003 and 2004, births, recorded births were over 500 in each of those years. However, beginning in 2005 through 2017, births dropped down to a lower level, ranging within 400 to 482 a year. And then, beginning in 2018, births dropped down to yet another level, a lower level, and showing that three of those four years, from 2018 through 2021, births were below Next, we'll take a look at housing sales. As we've seen in most districts, the housing sales have been on the rise. If you look in 2012, there were 191 sales recorded that year, and then that increased to a peak of 382 sales recorded in 2021. However, due to a lack of available inventory, sales did drop down in 2022. However, the median sale price continued to climb, and in 2022, the median sale price increased to the historical high of 547,000. So what we're seeing here in many districts is, due to a limited supply of available inventory, sales in the last year or so have declined, but the median price continues on the uptrend. This lists some of the proposed, the major proposed housing projects. But there has been, over the last, since last year and pretty much the year before, there's been little change to these projects. Most of them seem to be in a holding pattern for the time being, with the exception of the one, the last one, the Water Street project, which is located at the DPW site for 109 affordable units. So that seems to be, from the information that was provided to us, that project seems to be moving forward. Next, we'll take a look at enrollment within the district. So over the, this shows historical enrollment from 2013 through 2023. So there was, during that period, there was a gain of 355 students during the first half of the historical period. However, there was a loss of 113 students during the second half of the historical period. And we are projecting that there will be additional losses during the next five years, with an expected loss of 208 students or 4.4%. This slide shows you the changes to the enrollment by grade configuration over the same timeframe. For the first half of the historical period, again, there was a gain of 355 students. However, there was a loss during that period in the elementary grade configurations, while gains were recorded in the middle and high school grade configurations. During the second half of the historical period, 2018 through 2023, losses were recorded in the elementary and middle grades, while the high school grades, enrollment in the high school grades remained stable. Looking forward to the projections for the next five years, where we're projecting a loss of, total loss of 208 students. There are losses projected in the elementary and high school grades, while the middle-grade enrollment is expected to remain stable. So what are some of the factors that are, have gone into impacting the projected enrollment? First, again, district enrollment peaked in 2018, when 448, slightly more than 4,800 students were enrolled. However, losses have been recorded in four of the last five years. District births in 2018, 19, and 20 were at the lowest level of the historical period. This will impact kindergarten enrollment. The kindergarten enrolled more than 350 students in seven years of the historical period. However, there are 343 students currently enrolled, and due to lower birth levels, projections indicate that kindergarten enrollment will range, will remain below 350, ranging within 289 to 344 students during the next five years. So total district enrollment will be impacted as these smaller cohorts move up through the system. And further impact from that is the district will experience losses through displacement. During the last seven years, the district has lost students as smaller kindergarten cohorts have replaced larger graduating 12th grade classes. And this trend will continue with losses of between 72 to 164 students each year through 2028 due to this displacement. Next, we'll take a look at elementary space needs. This shows for the period of 2018 through 2023, that although the pre-K to 5 enrollment has decreased during that time, the students enrolled in self-contained special ed classes has increased from 61 in 2018 up to 100 students in 2023. And this has, of course, impacted section, classroom sections within the district in the elementary grades. So in 2018, the district housed 115 sections for pre-K through 5, eight of those being self-contained special ed sections, for a total of 123. If you look ahead to the current year, 2023, there are fewer general ed sections. However, the number of self-contained special ed sections has increased to 14. So although the total number of sections has remained the same, there has been growth in the number of self-contained special ed sections that are required in the district. So total elementary enrollment decreased by 68 students during the last five years. That includes the loss of 107 students in regular ICT classes, but this was offset by a significant gain of 39 students enrolled in self-contained special ed classes. So despite declining enrollment, the total need for elementary sections has remained stable. In 2023, when compared to 2018, a decrease of six grade-level classes has been matched with an increase of six self-contained special ed sections during this period. So as we've seen in a number of districts, declining elementary enrollment does not necessarily imply the need for fewer instructional sections. To adequately serve the needs of all students, more sections may be needed as additional, in addition to more spaces that may be required for remedial support services, or, in many cases, also ELL services. So that, that's about it. Do I, can I answer any questions?
Barbara, just to add to that, too. At the secondary level, the recent change in the state education department's definition of educating kids who are above the age of 18 has also increased to the age of 22. So even though the decrease out of a 1,600-pupil population at OHS, over the next five years, to see a decrease of 63 students, we will be keeping some students in special ed for another year for 22. So again, a similar scenario.
Yeah.
Just, yeah. It doesn't necessarily mean less, the need for, less.
Right.
Okay, great. Are there any questions from trustees? Trustee, sorry, Roger?
Thank you so much. This is like, I always enjoy these presentations because it just kind of gives me a lot of perspective and just gives a really great view into what's going on, that, you know, some really good insights in there. I have some questions. In terms of the data that you looked at, have, is there any information that you happen to come across around people who've left the state? Because I know we've had a net movement out of state.
Yes, correct.
And, and some of the data that shows in there, obviously, the housing, I know that that's down, there's, and there's economic factors on that, you know, interest rates being high, that'll, that'll be reflected in that. Inventories, obviously, I get all of that. But there, you know, like, I think the, the challenge here is, as we look at this, right, is how, how deep does it go in terms of the ability to be able to look at what foreign-born looks like? I mean, it's probably hard to tell now, just because that information's very, it's sparse, probably just not, you know, some of it, you're just gonna have to build some assumptions on that. Because I know that there has, you know, a lot of communities have seen an increase in that.
Yes.
I don't think that that, that will necessarily change, but I, just as a, an estimate, a percent of, of that impacts this school district by how much projecting that? I'd be curious to get some perspective on that.
Oh, I really, honestly, there is really no way for me to, to give you an answer to that because it's, I can't.
Let's just try it this way. Instead of a numerical number, is it significant enough that it makes, that would it impact our space constraints, meaning severely? I mean, we're severe state now, right? But would it impact it even more where we're kind of in a problem state beyond severe? severe?
Again, I have not, you know, had an opportunity to analyze the space within the district, so I really can't comment on that. I just can comment on that, you know, there are a lot of districts, as you are, are seeing an influx of immigrant student, and immigrant population resulting in immigrant students entering the school district. As far as what, giving you a percent, I really am not able to do that. And, you know, I'm also asked how, how can I, how can I project how many immigrants will be coming into a district? And I can't, honestly, because there are just so many different factors, you know, there's no way to project how many people will be coming across the border and then where they will, what parts of the country they will be dispersed to, what the changes in the political realm will be. So not to be evasive, but.
Yeah, and I get you. As I'm thinking about the information, it just kind of brings up what will we need? And this goes to Mary in terms of ENL support and, you know, any, anything particularly for, as we're coming in to that, there's so much in terms of the kinds of support we need and the kinds of spaces that we would need them in. And that's the impetus for me asking. And I, I appreciate the fact that you don't have that full.
I wish I, yeah. I wish I had some more concrete information to share.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And then just two questions, and I'll hand it over to anybody else that wants to ask questions. But typically, as you've looked at this year-on-year, if I look back at past projections that you made, have you looked at kind of your actual versus projected?
Oh, yes.
And, and how far off are you by way of a delta on that? In terms of, are you pretty close on that or, or in terms of what you're projected versus actual?
As a generalization, are projections fall within a 4%, margin of error?
That's actually really good, yeah.
Yeah.
That's, that's really pretty tight, you know, 4%.
Yeah.
All right, that's good to know. And then the other question, I just wanted a clarification, I just wasn't, maybe it wasn't clicking for me. Could you explain the losses through the displacement to me again?
That's where the graduating 12th grade class is larger than the incoming kindergarten class of the following year.
Okay, all right. So it, that produces that net loss.
Right.
And that's what you're calling displacement because if you have.
If you have.
If you have 300 students that are graduating, you might have like 200 students that are coming into kindergarten, so therefore, you know, we're not replenishing them at the rate that we're, they're leaving us.
Yes.
That's what.
Yes, now you do, in some, some grades, I don't have that in front of me right now. There are some, you do pick up some students in grade-to-grade migrations.
Right.
In other words, you might have 100 kindergarteners this year and maybe next year for first grade, you have 110 first graders. So you do pick up some to kind of offset the losses through displacement, but overall, yeah, that's, every year, the district is losing students.
So the 208 that might be, might be, you know, as we have the, the pluses and minuses might be.
Right, right. Exactly.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Rob?
Yeah, thanks. Just going back to Roger's question, so do, I guess the question is for the, for you, Mary, then, do we as a district then have data? And Christine, you might have mentioned that this comes in the beds data. Do we track new arrivals slash asylum seeker slash migrants? Do we track that as a district? Do we have that number from, say, the last three to five years through today?
Yes, actually, because the state requires us to place students and assess them and make sure, so we do. And I will tell you, it's in, it's actually in Maria's report, so I would tell you that in 2018, the 19th school year, we had 342 students identified as English language learners. As of October 23rd of this year, we're at 1,000.
That's net new?
That, that's, yeah, that's English language learners, but does that?
Of all different languages, of all different.
That's not necessarily net new because English language learner, right? It's classification for a number of years.
Right, I guess it too, it impacts, it impacts like programming rooms because there are tiers and levels in that, whatever the world language is, so it impacts space and needs.
Right.
Right.
No, just to answer the question, or to clarify the question, is, is like, that, I don't know that that thousand, English language learner designation follows a student for a number of years. It's not just like, right now, this first year. So that thousand number, I think that's the number district-wide across the board. That's what I've seen in the state numbers.
Multiple, so again, just to the point, because you'll see it in Maria's report, I read the question and I apologize if I misread it, coming off the point of space and how we allocate space to identify the needs and the different needs of students. So different program needs required by different designations. To Barbara's point about just because you might have a decrease, it doesn't mean you have more room. You have changing needs based upon students.
Right. Is it also correct that just because someone is an English language learner doesn't mean that they weren't born here?
Correct.
And it doesn't mean that they, that their families haven't lived here.
All of the above. It just requires, these are more students who require a different level of programming and need, and it has tiers of needs which impact different spaces.
Right.
So someone could make the conclusion that you're losing enrollment, so you should have more space.
Right, my, my, right. So that, that is not necessarily, to Frank's point, it's not necessarily a one-to-one correlation. That means we had, we have currently 1,000 classified as, you know, again, migrants, new arrivals, whatever the classification, so I guess.
But we don't, we don't have 1,000 classified as migrants and new arrivals. I just want to be really careful.
We have students who need English language learners.
Right, but can we get that other number?
Of, of how many are, are new arrivals versus?
Over the last, well, X amount, yes. Is that number, do we track that?
I mean, it sounds like we would have, we have to track that for the state.
You can get numbers of who's new to the district. You absolutely can get that. We know who, who comes to a district, where they come from, their transcript. If it's out of state, some states don't require like three years of history. We do, we require four in New York. So we see report cards and transcripts and curriculum from across the states, from different countries, from other places. So we see that.
Right. And that, just bringing that back full circle, your data shows 2021 actual numbers. My question was to fill the gap from, let's just say, 2021 to 2023 and beyond, so we can figure out the, the number of actual people, the students, to keep in mind as part of this. That's why I was asking the question, if we track that, because you go back to 21.
Yeah, and we know that there's, you know, there have been, there's been a lot of activity since 2021.
Right, right. So it sounds like we can, we do.
But tracking that, at this point, we don't have that data.
Right, right.
And very fluid with student needs, so even if I go back to what I mentioned about the state and requiring to educate kids till they're 22. Let's say you have a student who has met the requirements at the point of 20. You know, Kim has to project staffing before she even has done mid-year triennials for students, so student programs can change, too. So even to the point that made, while we might have kindergarten spaces, now less kindergarten kids, but we have needs, a child might be declassified, a child might, again, just like English language learners, there are tiers of services. So again, I guess the point being if someone's trying to say, make a correlation of, you got decreasing enrollment, so you have flexibility of space, that's not necessarily the case.
All right, it's not a one-to-one.
It's not a one-to-one.
Right, right, okay. But it sounds like in theory, we could, if it's interesting others here, to get the numbers based on the new enrolled.
New enrolled.
Newly enrolled is what the classification is. Okay. And just back to the deck for one second, the, the reasons to why there's, the why in some of it, is it all attributed to birth rates or could it, is it based on community factors, like people moving to other communities in Austin or other, other reasons? Or is it all the data based on the, the birth rates? And then the second part of that, are you seeing similar trends in other areas of New York? But I guess we could specifically say Westchester. I guess what I'm trying to get at is, is this an Austin specific thing that's occurring? And if so, what's the why? Is it just birth rate or is there other factors here?
There are other factors. Austining is, has a high rental, you know, how's, you have significant, I don't have that in front of me right now, but it's a high rental, a housing rate, which usually leads to a more transient population. So that, between the, the birth rates and the fact that this district does have that transient population, you have more people coming in and out, that definitely has an impact. So every district, this is not unusual for a district with similar demographics to Austining. It is, you, you look at a different district where, you know, there's a much higher owner-occupied housing situation, where you have a much less transient population, then the trends are much more stable.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Rob. Do we have any other questions, comments, clarifications?
Sort of a comment slash clarification to some of the points I think Mary touched on, and I think you touched on at last meeting about considerations going forward with space needs, not just as far as classified students, but also the capacity that most of the buildings are already at, right? And so a decreased enrollment doesn't automatically mean there's all this free space as well, right? Because of those specific needs. Since it was brought up, something interesting that I learned at the NISBA conference was around questions, concerns that other districts might have around how, how many students are coming in that are migrant students and things of that nature. And they had said that separate from New York City, there is somewhere around probably 300 total students that fall under that statewide, right? So I thought that was a really eye-opening, enlightening kind of number. It wasn't like a hard kind of data point, but that's a ballpark, and that's throughout the state, separate from New York City, right? And so I think that's a kind of good thing to have in the back of our minds when we're kind of having these concerns or if there are concerns or just questions that that come up. And I think that's something that, at least at the state level, NISBA, they're aware of what those numbers are, and I'm pretty sure they might live somewhere. But I thought that was a very interesting, most people in attendance were very surprised by that number because I think people just have this perception that it's much higher than that statewide, so.
And I think anyone can, if you read the New York State report card, if you Google NYSED report card, you can see enrollment trends for any school district in New York State, all 700-plus of them.
Christine, go ahead.
I have one clarifying question. I'm referring right now to slide, I think it's 12, that had our projected enrollment by 2028 to be a loss of 208 students or 4.4%. And I just wanted to square that with Roger's comment about asking about a margin of error was around 4%. You had kind of ball parked it, so just so I understand, we may not be looking at that big of a loss, it's somewhere within a range near there.
Yes, I mean, there, again, yes, you're right, there is a margin of error there.
Right.
So that.
And so like a relative flat line would be within that margin of error or a bigger loss potentially, too.
It could be, yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Right, so when you see the decrease to Christine's point at the high school of minus 65 out of a 1,600 student population at the high school.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, right, yeah. Or even K5, when you take a look at the enrollment in the K5 buildings, 149 kids.
That's, yeah, out of, out of the, your elementary enrollment, it's, yeah.
Great, Frank?
Two questions. For the projects, and I know you had said the Water Street project was the one that was sort of furthest along, is that, are those numbers of those students included in these enrollment projections or no?
No, we do not do that at this point because until we know that, that project is definitely going ahead and we have some kind of a timeline on it, it's really, we really can't add those accurately, include those in the enrollment projections.
Sure, no, and I get that. I think historically, that's been what you've done, and some of these projects have been on the books for years.
Exactly.
And so I get it, but I guess in theory, if a few of these were to hit, that could change your numbers, too.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to clarify, so nothing in that slide is in or any kind of new development?
Yeah, that's, I, we developed those projected student yields, just to give you an idea that if that project does reach completion, that that's what might be, could be expected. However, you also have to keep in mind that a lot of times, if it, by the time a project does reach completion, there have been changes from the original plan.
It's a few years down the road, right.
So that, you know, maybe there were more three-bedroom units planned initially, and now it's, you know, mostly studios and one-bedrooms, which would be a much smaller student yield. So, yeah, there's, to put those students in the projections right now would, would really not produce accurate projections, so.
I get it. And like a project initially that is maybe a 55-plus retirement may not end up being a 55-plus retirement.
Or vice versa, yes.
So you may get student yield out of that when initially you were, you didn't.
Yes.
I get it, so there's some valuable there.
We certainly have seen those, right.
The second question was really sort of, I guess, more curiosity, but the birth rates during the pandemic years were down sort of everywhere, it seems. Like, do you have any insights into that as far as, I know there's no crystal ball, but, I mean, just, I would say anecdotally, looking at that, a lot of people were avoiding hospitals and there was a lot of concern during that period, it doesn't surprise me. Is there anything that's talking about, like, we've seen the articles about the aging of the Hudson Valley, which reflects the numbers that you're showing, where the population is, is getting older? Is there any sort of understanding of the pandemic as an influence on birth rates at all?
Well, the, births, if I go back to that slide, there was an uptick in births in 2021, post-COVID.
It looked like there were some pandemic babies in there.
So, yeah, that, you know, either it's, later in the year, it could have been pandemic babies or the people who had postponed pregnancies during COVID decided then to go ahead with, with a pregnancy post-COVID. So what we're waiting to see, though, for 2022, we really don't expect, we expect that that will just be kind of a blip, that the birth rate will, we're guessing will probably drop down again once we get the 2022 data. So, but.
Hard to know. I appreciate the insights, thank you.
Any other comments? Well, I think all of the things that I was going to cover were covered by my wonderful colleagues, so I just wanted to thank you very much for your time, for being here with us this evening. I think this is maybe the first time we've had you here in person since the pandemic.
Since, yes.
So it's lovely to see you in person again.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, and I wish you a safe trip home.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Barb. Thank you. Oh, you're welcome.
All right, I think we now have our next item on the agenda, which is our equity item, our annual assessment report data, Austining by the numbers.
All right, so if I can ask Maria, Jessica, and Kim to join us at the lead table here for a conversation. I know there's an awful lot of information here. The intention this evening is not to read each slide or to go through it because that's available for reference as you hear, but again, to highlight certain key aspects of this and to show how they all join together in terms of the, we could have added more, but I thought there was plenty at this moment for a lot to absorb. So thank you, Kim, Jessica, and Maria. Maria, I put the vast majority of this together and supported with Jessica and Kim as we go through it. And even today in executive cabinet, we had a great psychometric conversation on how you read data, how you can interpret data, you know, when the state issues a report on this, how do you look at it? How do you group it in a meaningful way? But the one thing I will say before. The one thing I will say before this is done, the 3 through 8 testing in the regions and the graduation rate data has not been released by the state education department yet, which is highly unusual. They plan on releasing that data in December, so although the data has been unembargoed for over a couple of months, the information is based on the Lyric region, the Lower Hudson Regional Information Center, which includes Putnam, Rockland, and Westchester. As do every other school district who does state testing, to the Lower Hudson Regional Information Center's data warehouse, where you can see item analysis on tests and on information. So while you are looking at, you know, a balcony view of information, at the ground level, staff and teachers are actually engaged this year on different item analysis work, and they can look at the data from a program-based perspective, and then from an individual student achievement perspective. Okay? So, thank you, everybody. So just as a brief overview, Maria, if you want to just kick it off?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, Superintendent Fox Alter, President Crossling, members of the board, my colleagues, community families, and hopefully some students are listening. All pathways lead to high school graduation and beyond. That's our goal, and that's why we do what we do.
Again, this is just a brief outline of our district long-range plan, as we presented of the past several meetings. Again, our vision, our beliefs, our core values are all anchored in the work, and I want to again thank this community for putting together some members that are here with us this evening in building the long-range plan. So this anchors our work.
Yes, and the first couple of slides just reiterates that. I just want to read something, last year, for those members of the board that were with us, they, you know that we engaged in our street data book study. Thank you, Dr. Dealey, for leading that work with us. And I would like to read something that really anchors our vision for really humanizing the data that you're going to see tonight. One of our goals for this school year has, as shared by our colleagues during their action plan presentations in October, is to empower each other through data literacy. We, on a daily basis, are reimagining education by focusing our analysis of data from the student up, within our classrooms, within our schools, within our organizational system. Our work is built around our students' cultural wealth and intellectual potential. Street data, which continually reminds us that what is measurable is at times not the same as what is valued. Please know that as we engage in our discussion tonight, Osning by the numbers, that each data point has a narrative and an individual behind it. Thank you. And I'm managing two computers, so please bear with me. Obviously, do you mind? Thank you, Ms. Kim. So obviously, we anchor our work on our Y. And this is where we are, New York State's annual assessment report, Osning by the numbers. First of all, what I'd like to share with you this evening is that New York State Education Department, obviously, is, has a system that classifies our schools into different categories. Behind me on the screen, you see the legend of the different classifications. And you'll see LSI, local support and improvement, which is formerly what they considered good standing. TSI, which is targeted support and improvement, and the reason why you see an asterisk next to it is because we are identified as a TSI district, because at this moment in time, our Roosevelt School is, was designated last year as a targeted school, targeted support and improvement school. And we'll talk a little bit about that. And then obviously, you see the other categories. One of the things, the Y you see, the, with the plus, and you'll see it on the other slide, there it is, these are our categories, these are our classifications here in Osning. We are a targeted district, as I just mentioned before, because of our Roosevelt School that was last year identified. If you notice, these are the noticings, all our schools are local support and improvement, which are good standing, what used to be good standing. AMD status changed from a TSI school and became a LSI school, and Roosevelt went from good standing to TSI. And the reason why, the reason why you see 21, 22 as good standing, is because at that point, that's what it was categorized as. Please know that our data was unembargoed as of October. The state informed us at that time as well, that the accountability data will not be released until December of this year. So at this moment in time, we do not have the state designations, but we are able to share our state data.
And unembargoed just means, for a period of time, we're not allowed to say publicly what our test results were.
Exactly. Thank you, President Crossling. Yes, so we, normally, the state will release the data to us, the district. It's our responsibility to look at it and analyze it, but we are not able to release it to the community until it is officially unembargoed. Please notice, the next slide is our two-year comparison of participation rate on our state assessments. If you notice, the, at the bottom, our participation rates pretty much remain steady. We had a participation rate in ELA for last year at 80%, so 80% of our children actually engaged in the assessment, grades three to eight, and in mathematics, 77%. Pretty steady, as you can see.
And again, the federal government wants a 95% participation rate.
Yes, so as you also engage, as we engage in this discussion, please note that the data that we're seeing is pretty much for ELA, 80% of our students who took it, and in mathematics, 77%. And participation rate is part of our accountability, we also held accountable for participation, which is what they're looking for at 95%. The next screen that you're seeing is our English Language Arts Assessment, a two-year proficiency level. So it's important that we not only see our, how we're measured within our own district, but also against the region. Right now, the only data we have is in the region, obviously, the state, we normally also do a comparison of how we're doing against the state. And for the Lyric, the Lower Hudson, the Lyric is the BOSI's that supports us with our data and is our data warehouse. It is representative of 62 school districts in three counties, Westchester, Putnam, and Rockland. The data that you're seeing here is spring 22 to spring 2023. The blue, if you see the legend, oh, that looks purple, but it's blue, purple, and green. So there are various ways, I just want to take a step back as well. The data that you will be seeing this evening is pretty much the satellite data, the umbrella, the balcony view. During some of our presentations, Ms. Maricia, who will be presenting in a couple of weeks for our special education, she'll get a little bit more granular when it comes to special education. Also, Ms. De La Cruz Arroyo, who will also be presenting on our multilingual learners, she will be presenting a more granular view of our multilingual learners. So this is just a real quick overview, so that our community, our colleagues, and our Board of Education has an idea of the data that we look at, one of the data points that we look at, in order to meet student needs. This has a couple of this green, right here, this graph, we see it a couple of ways. We can see it from year to year. The first four bars, that says third through eighth combined, obviously, these are proficiency levels. The state considers proficiency levels, levels three and four. So this is a combination of three and four. As you can see, from grade, from year to year, in 2022, we, we had a 36% proficiency rate, and 20-
Sorry, I'm not sure I understand that.
Sure.
What is meant, can you just clarify this for layman's terms, three, level three and four, what does that mean?
Thank you. So our state assessments are graded, they have a score of levels one, it's four levels, levels one, two, three, and four. Proficiency is, the state considers proficiency levels, threes and fours.
Okay, and you're proficient, and this is-
This is just, we can see across, we have by grade, so there are different ways that we can look at it. We look at it by grade, or we can look at it from cohort to cohort. So for example, if you look at eighth grade, I'm sorry, seventh and eighth grade, we can see that in seventh grade, for Osning in 2022, our seventh graders scored a proficiency level of 36%. Those seventh graders are currently sitting in eighth grade, so now we go to the dark, purple or blue, right behind me, and our seventh graders, last year that scored threes and fours, scored 46. 46% of our students are now at proficiency level.
Right, so same cohort of kids-
Same cohort of students.
The following year, they jump from 34 to 46.
36 to 46, so 10 points of growth, 10 percentile points, excuse me.
So you look at it, just to reemphasize what Maria said, so you want to look at your cohort by looking at each year, but you could also look at how you did, and look at it from a program or curriculum perspective, when you do an item analysis on testing. Like, for example, did they teach, did I teach that unit too late in the year, meaning after the state assessment, or a concept or an approach? So you can look at it from both ways. Or is this something that's not part of our instructional, our curriculum, our scope and sequence? So again, you get lots of interesting information from all of that.
So we could, like, look at the fourth to fifth, that cohort there, and figure out, like, what happened in between there, what was, you know, was everybody struggling with the same concept?
Right.
For whatever reason.
And President Crossling, thank you for mentioning that. So we are currently engaging, and I can speak to the professional, the staff meeting that occurred in our three to four building in Claremont on Monday, and that's exactly what our educators are doing. They're looking at an item analysis, which is of our New York State assessments. An item analysis identifies the specific questions of our, the release questions of our assessment, because not every question is released. And they start identifying patterns, right? The why, what was the question asking, what vocabulary? So we start getting a little bit more granular as to where our children were facing difficulties, and where our children really met success.
Right, I will have to give a shout out to the Osning Board of Education during that period of time, because the push and the advocacy to get a certain level of items released was a huge fight, I have to say that. So we, many, many people, if they sat down to, students sat two, three days to take a test, not being able to see the item analysis based on that, we felt it was very disrespectful. I was part of that effort, working with colleagues from Osning. So again, being able now to look at the item analysis, it just means the test developers have to go back the next year and create norm reference type, might, testing questions on it, that they have to use afresh instead of recycling the same question. So again, another emphasis on advocacy that took place here.
Which is very important, which empowers us as educators to really know the successes and the areas of need of our children.
Right.
To see, and again, we can also compare it to the region. The next slide, it's just the same information, presented in a different way, a little bit more visually, less visually attractive. But we can see, one of the things that we did notice is that Osning pretty much follows the same trends that the region follows. We may not be there yet. One of the things that we are working on, though, and obviously, we all know about our implementation of our core, since I have my colleague right here to my right, but we know the implementation of our core, and the fact that it is now, we have a program that's consistent across the grades, that is a, obviously, research-based, and that is, we are committed to the fidelity of the implementation. We, hopefully, will start seeing the increase, the increased performance of our children, and how it's meeting our needs and aligning ourselves to supporting our children in their literacy skills.
Now, sometimes, just as a little sidebar, when you look at this, we spend hours, I love this topic, but take a look at what happened with sixth grade, right? So throughout the region, and I guarantee you would see it in the state, people would say, well, that was an easy test that year, right? Who knows? However, the state education department takes a look at a level three and a level four, and sometimes they embed in a test, a level four question, fully expecting only a handful of students that would score at a level four, just to spike it out. It's not weighted the same. So they actually have a psychometric policy committee that's set aside, where they really look at the rawest scale score conversion based upon policy statements of levels three or four in the assessment. So did they figure in the sixth grade test, I would ask that question, did they underestimate, you know, the, the level four questions in that assessment, because a lot of kids got them right, and so it tended to perform in a different way than the other grades, who knows? But it's an exercise in psychometrics in any way.
Thank you. This slide now gets to the granular, a little bit more granular in our data, and it's, it's, in overall, combined, as you can see, grades three through eight are level ones, and this is where you see the different levels, right? The three to four being our combined, which is our proficiency level, and then level two, and then level one, obviously, are most struggling, students who are struggling the most. You can see, again, there's an upward trend from year to year. However, if you look at it from level ones to level twos, you start seeing a little bit of where our children are falling. So if you see in 2023, level ones, we had 35% of our children, level two, 30%, but combined, we also have 35% of our, of our children being at a proficient level.
Is, I'm sorry, so is this, the levels one, two, three, and four, that's the state assessment level, or is those the levels of the students that need the intervention level?
Those are the levels assigned by New York State Education Department.
On, on, the testing scores?
Yes.
Three and four being proficient?
Proficient.
Right, right, and the state does release each year a cut score number that you use to determine which student should be flagged for academic intervention services. So again, they release a cut score number each year after they've set a policymaking board to figure out where their cuts are.
And that's, hopefully, the information we'll be receiving in December as well.
Right.
And every year fluctuates, depending on what the psychometricians, how they do their formulas.
And again, this is based on the 80% of the students who took the test, you had 20% who did not take.
Only 80%.
Right.
This one is a two-year review by school. So again, this is data that each of our schools has, and this is the balcony view. And behind each of these percentages, there are individual children that, then we start, again, it's from the district, to the school, to the grade, to the class, to the student.
Sorry, I just want to make sure I understand that, as we're presenting, because it's quite, quite a bit of information there.
There's a lot.
Just picking, let's pick, right, that level four, three and four.
Right here.
Okay, that's saying 39, 39%-
In 2020, 2022.
In 2022, we're proficient. In 2023, it went down to 32%. But in grade four, it was 28% in 2022, but that went up to 38%.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And then if you follow the cohort, our fourth graders last year, or here, can you see my-
No.
Right here.
The 24th?
You're still in fourth, right there. If you follow that cohort to fifth grade here, at Roosevelt, so 24%, and now they're sitting in fourth grade at 37%. So you can go by cohort, from our third graders last year to our fourth graders this year, or you can go grade to grade? There's a lot on this screen.
Yeah, no, I just want to make sure I'm following, tracking.
I had originally, I don't know if you have the copies, I had originally put a bar to just show you how to, you know, but then we, it was very busy, so we started, we decided to delete. This is mathematics, so we're switching from language arts to mathematics. And please remember, about 78% of our children took the mathematics assessment. And this is to, again, compared to the, to the region, and the same framework, right? Third to eighth grade combined, and this is our proficiency levels, levels three and four.
I will, I do need to say, the state and its infinite wisdom, sorry. Our, in eighth grade, you have a number of students, a number of three sections who take algebra, the high school assessment. They're not required to take both assessments. Their scores don't count, though, towards the middle school. It counts towards algebra.
Yes.
So you're, while you're looking at a group of students in eighth grade, it's not factoring in, in any way, shape, or form, the students who took algebra, right?
There were 49 children that took the algebra assessment last year in eighth grade. Just so you know.
So wait, so is that why it looks like it's from 42% down to, down in eighth grade? Or I'm con-
So, no problem. So let's look at seventh grade? Is that what you're looking at?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So if you see-
I got that, I think I-
So if you see in 2022, 14% were proficient.
Got it.
And in 2023, in Austining, 42%.
Okay.
So we did, every single, by the way, the biggest noticing here is that every single grade demonstrated growth in mathematics.
Okay.
Is algebra the barometer that's generally used? Because I just want to make, I know we talk about algebra a lot, and I know algebra is only going to be, you'll probably see that in eighth grade more than you see it.
Yeah, right.
But what, what is the, I mean, I see each of these different things. I just don't know what, and there are varying degrees of what's being measured in each grade. What is, what are the barometers that are indicative of proficiency in this? I guess I'm, it's just a big conundrum to me to, to understand what specifically makes somebody proficient in a third grade. I mean, I get the eighth grade, if that's algebra, but, you know, these are very different things, is there-
So what makes it, are the cutoffs, whatever the state decides?
So it's just state's subjective decision.
It's just the three or the four.
Correct.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
They change the cut scores, Roger.
Exactly.
This is very tough to- It's like, it's a moving goalpost.
Exactly.
And that's what, that, this is really hard to digest for that reason.
Right, correct, 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 correct.
It's, it's not black and white at all.
I will say, though, in general, the trend, so you look at this for trends, right? So you will take a look at this and say, there has been an increase in math, and you would correlate that to, a steady increase, actually. The district adopted math in focus as a very, and has been given fidelity of implementation towards that. So you see that positive trend reflected in that. I will say, just from having participated in a number, particularly with the algebra regions, I participated in the policy setting exercises with State Ed a number of times, two full day, sitting with a whole group of statisticians up in Albany. But when you take a look at it, they would say to it, when they set policy, they get a group of math teachers who put together the algebra assessment, and they ask them, you know, what's a level four question? What's a question that everyone should know? Which question, you know, they kind of like, have a mindset about how to approach that. And then they make a psychometric decision based upon how many students who took the algebra regions will be scoring at a level four. It's almost like the proverbial bell curve that you see in colleges for grades. So there's a lot that ties into that, and not every question would be weighted exactly the same, because you could then have 80% of the students in the state of New York fail. So, so it's a, it's a, it's very different from, I'll date myself, from when I took the Regents exams. So they set policy around the cut scores based upon how the assessment performs, and based upon some assumptions they had about whether a question was a level one, level two, level three, or level four.
Yeah, it's just so hard because of this cut score issue. It just kind of makes this much more complicated. Because you don't have a bar that you're always looking at, because that bar just keeps moving.
Right, 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 yeah.
You're correct. One thing that we do, and one thing that we do do is, again, like I mentioned before, we do look at the release questions. So we're able to identify what the question is asking, what type of vocabulary words are being used, the academic vocabulary, the expectations of the, of the question, the format of the question could also throw a student off. So there are many things that we look at, at the types of questions that are being asked.
Right. But again, if you look at that trend in math, that's, from a general statement, the folk, math in focus and the work that's being taken by our teachers and by everybody else is very good.
Right.
And like Superintendent Fox Alter has mentioned, everything that, the data analysis, the results, and what we identify always goes back to our, has curricular implications, has programmatic implications, has professional learning implications. So it informs a lot of our work on a daily basis.
And I, I'm just, I still personally, maybe there's others here, I'm still not following the increase based on the cohort.
Sure.
If in third grade, you ask the students, what's two times two? And they don't get it, but you ask the same question in fourth grade, and they do get it, that's an increase. But in the fourth grade, if it's a totally different set of questions, I'm not understanding how then you could, it has to be consistent to show the actual increase.
You're assessing standards?
Yeah.
It's standards, the assessments are standards-based. So we're also teaching to the standard.
Right, right, yeah.
So each, so each grade level has, a more simplistic way to say it is, at the end of each grade level, students are expected to know certain skill sets. So at the end of third grade, the Next Generation Standards outline what students are supposed to know at the end of third grade, fourth grade, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth. And that's the same with the ELA. So when students take a New York State assessment, it's based on those particular skills that are, that are taught at that grade level. So that's where those, the students at that particular grade level are tested on those particular, that particular content that is taught throughout the year, which New York State has set as the measurements that students should be able to know and be able to do by the end of each particular grade level. And then based on those, based on those questions, and how students perform on the state test is where they level the students based on the knowledge of being a level one, a level two, a level three, and a level four. I hope that.
Yeah, I guess, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, it's all aligned to the standards.
I think one of your questions, to your point, was, how do you look at a grade level performance? And then how do you follow cohort, if they're taking a different test?
Yeah.
Different questions?
Yeah, if the questions are consistent, then you can show the correlation. Look, we went up 10% a year. But if the questions totally change, I don't, I don't see how you can then say, we went up 10%.
So there's two ways you look at data from an instructional perspective. You always look at grade level, because that gives you information on how you're teaching that current grade. But you also want to look at cohort data, because you want to watch that cohort and see if they're growing, if they're flatlining, if our instructional program systematically is helping those students increase their performance, decrease their performance. So you always look at both cohort and grade level. So it gives you different information, it's not the same information, but you're using that information to determine instructional methods, resources. Do you need to make a shift? You're watching your return on investment, right? Like, we've invested this information is, for example, ARC, if you go back to ELA, that it shows on slide. Just to give us a clear example, I think it's slide 12. No, the one where you could see the grade level performance, the, no, the next one. That one, yes. The ELA, purple one.
Can I ask a question?
So this one shows us, in 2022, our performance was at 39%, 28%, 29%, 47%, 36%. We needed to make an instructional decision, because across the grades, our performance was low. We made an instructional decision. Our performance, we can see what it was last year, but we also have to take into consideration that was only eight months of new instruction. The assessment is given in April, and so when we get forward in our ERLA data, we'll see a different performance. Yeah.
Annie, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I don't know if this is helpful, Rob, and you can tell me if I'm off base with this, but math skills build year after year. So if you're looking at fifth graders in 2022, it's 22%. Then in sixth grade, it's 28%. So they have more mastered those fifth grade skills and added on to sixth grade skills. That's how I was looking at it, to kind of show the correlation.
Because every year builds on each other, right? So the, the learning standards, Ms. Gomez, as you mentioned, the learning standards continue to spiral and continue to build on each other and just become cognitively more deeper.
So they can't just be independent.
And in order to make that shift, which Annie just perfectly stated, was to have a curricular materials that are aligned to that. So that's why you see that. You see growth in math across that period of time. What are the curricular materials that you're using in the classroom?
And because it's building constant math towards that trajectory of algebra, you would want to make sure that your grades are increasing so that we hit algebra proficiency.
I mean, if you are making a test, let's say, to use yours, you're using multiplication tables, three times three, that might be a level, whatever it is, a level three in, on third grade. If you have a two-step or three-step word problem in grade four, where you need to use that skill, that could be a level two or a level one, because you would have had to build on, master it, and then apply it to score at a level three or four in fourth grade.
Continuing to build, right? This speaks to also the work. Obviously, our numbers are not what we want them to be. So hence, the work that we're engaging in, curricular, curricular-wise. We have our support through Heidi Bromley, which I'm sure you've seen through your approval, so we appreciate that. In strengthening math instruction, one of our focus is really empowering our elementary teachers. We're generalists as elementary school teachers. So it's important that we empower our educators in seeing themselves as mathematicians in order for them to support and teach the math skills. So Heidi's doing that work with us, also aligning our pre-K12 mathematical vision, where we have now a math council, where we have representatives from pre-K all the way through 12th grade, where we come together and we work on aligning our curriculum and supporting each other in math instruction and content and different types of strands. So that is a lot of the work that's being done.
What is the lag time on this data, in terms of when you get, like, 2022, 2023?
So we normally get it. I believe this year, we received it late August.
So, and so that would have been a test in February?
No, our, our ELA was April 19th.
Okay, so April, and then you receive it in August.
August, late August.
So then, basically, what you do for NWEA, you're getting that more as like, in more real time-
Exactly.
Versus the lag on this one, so, okay.
And what we'd like to consider it is our state assessments one moment in time.
Yeah.
Right? Just one moment in time. And then we have our, our NWA, we have our ERLA and ANEEL, we have our benchmarks in mathematics, our unit tests, our lesson tests, assessments that we continually review and make informed decisions.
Just in terms of spoken sequence, Roger, your question begs another issue that all of us who are doing advocacy over the grades three through eight tests, you know, pacing, right? Your scope and sequence of your curriculum, does it align when the state is giving the test on it?
Yeah.
Even though you're two-thirds through third grade, and you've got some carryover concepts from the previous year. I understand math is scaffolded, but that gets a little, we often ask that it should be done at the end of the year, but the state would crash, because you've got your Regents exams, and you've got AP exams, and you've got other things. There just isn't capacity at the state level to handle all of that.
Yes. Even the positioning of the questions, so if you read the criticism sometimes of the test, if you put the, if you put the stretch questions at the beginning of the exam, you may see a cohort's grades just drop through the floor. Because they all get stuck on that, spend too much time on it, and then get frustrated and have a hard time going through.
They scaffold the questions.
So I think we're all getting to it, but it's very tough to look at this aside from trends and general trends. Like, wild swings in cohorts, the years I've been on the board, there's tons of them. You try to look at other districts, it's hard to match all that up. So you're trying to look for trends here.
Right.
It doesn't help the parent that's saying, what do my child need to know? Because by the time you get the data for the third grade, they're already in fourth, right? That's part of, that was part of the criticism, and Mary's talking about the release of the questions, the release of basically the timeliness of the data.
Right, that's why I asked about the lag time. Because, because I honestly feel that this, this here is more problematic for me in terms of what, what's being, what and how this is carried out and executed.
No, and I give our administrators great credit for something that's very, very difficult, right, across the board. But I, but I think generally speaking, and the thing we can't see right now is, how is Austining doing against the state average? Because quite honestly, I think a great story of Austining that gets lost in the numbers is when our poverty shot up, our state, we maintained our position in state average. And so poverty demographics are a big influence on student performance. So I think that that's a great story, and so I would love to see that as part of this as well.
Okay, thank you. This year?
Question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Just the concept of all this. I appreciate you prefacing the beginning of the presentation with just kind of grounding us, because it's a lot to kind of digest. As far as the accountability status quo, it's good to see that AMD in 2022, 23 went to good standing. Unfortunately, Roosevelt, in that same year, went to targeted school. How do we internally consider that, and the scope of all of this, when you have a cohort of students from a grade that was a targeted school, now going into a school that is, you know, coming off of that? And like, what, is there some type of focused level of, I don't know, support, or just kind of assessing, or, I don't know? I don't know, just, do we consider that factor, right?
Great question.
Absolutely, and thank you for your question. Yes, so we do. So when we receive our data, the data is disaggregated. So it does identify the areas or the sub, the subgroups that may be struggling, struggling more. So for example, multilingual learners, for example, young black men were under the, were the, were the subgroups that were struggling the most. So we then focus our energies on ensuring that we are monitoring them through our NWA, through then our ongoing assessments, and then we're providing the supports that we need.
Right.
But we do continue to monitor, yes.
And the state actually has, I have to give Commissioner Rosa a great deal of credit for a lot more flexibility in terms of understanding the impacts of poverty and other things. for a lot more flexibility in terms of understanding the impacts of poverty and other things. But the state will look at trends now and see where you fall in terms of the state factoring in when those designations are made. And then there's support given. It used to be punitive. It isn't at all anymore. It's very supportive. What can we do to help? What resources can we provide? They give money. They give extra PD. So again, they want to get involved. They want to look at individual plans that are shared with them to see what you can do to help. And then, how are you flagging them, to your point, Melissa, which is great question. When they move over to AMD, are we making sure that those students get the level of support that they need?
And hence, it's important to see that cohort, right? Going back to see where they were. Superintendent Fox Alter mentioned about financial support. So in order to answer your question, yes, they do provide us, so two, they provide money specific to the school, funding to the school, and funding to the district. So we have two pools of money that we are, we're using to support Roosevelt, as we did last year in supporting AMD. So we're putting structures in place to support that.
And there are all types of factors that are considered when it comes to the cohort, right? It's not simply, like, this in terms of supports, right? It's not simply as poverty as being a factor for supports that are needed.
No, not at all. No, then we start disaggregating the data or looking deeper into the children and seeing where the areas that they need additional support in, and then we put structures in place to do that.
I mean, it's an obvious place to start sometimes for us is like, what's the child's attendance record, right? Right? Like, you know, like, it's, it's a great place to start, and that should have been flagged if we're doing what we're doing all along, that we're watching kids.
I'm curious, doesn't, I'm not asking for an answer tonight, just curious if Roosevelt was combined with sixth grade, if it would still be a TSI school?
Thank you.
Good question.
No, I wrote it down.
Good question. Good question. Right.
So this year, the plan, the state has put a plan in place as far as converting our assessments to computer-based testing. Obviously, right now, they're paper-based. Last year, we started with Roosevelt. It was mandated that we start in fifth grade. This year, we've gone three to eight. So this year, we will be computer-based testing. Only a select few children will be taking our paper-based, depending on what their IEP states. But this year, three to eight, computer-based.
Does that change when we get the actual data back? I mean, would it still have that same lag?
Same lag. They just give us a wider window to administer the assessment.
So I will say, we do have our principals watching tonight.
Yes.
So I just want to thank Katie because she's in the TSI school. So she works together with keeping track of data in Substeam. She has a TSI team, which we're quite aware of it. And believe it or not, there are students and parents on the team, and they have a meeting tomorrow on this. So again, thank you, thank you, Katie.
Thank you, Katie. We also, in order to plan for it, it was a whole big committee. We had parents, we had Mr. Milstein, I believe you, you attended one of our meetings at Roosevelt. We had students, and we had obviously our staff. So it takes a lot of planning and making sure that we looked at data, social emotional data, which Ms. Maricio will speak to in a little while. We looked at all attendance data. We looked at many data points in order to really design a very intentional plan that Ms. Manaya is doing an amazing job at implementing. I know we've discussed this before. This is our five-year enrollment view that Superintendent Fox Alter mentioned. I just, as we were discussing it, I did a little analysis myself. So just know that for three years, I did an average of three years. It was 100, if we take 342, 585, I'm sorry, the increases. So from 2019 to 2020, we had an increase of 243. We welcomed 243 new families and new students. In 2021, from 2020 to 2021, 38. And from 2022 to 20, I'm sorry, from 21 to 22, we welcomed 194 new families and students. On an average, divided, I added them, divided 158 per year on an average over three years. Between March of 2023 to, from 22 to 23, 22 to 24 was 183 that we've welcomed. So we've welcomed, in about a year, we've welcomed 183 families. And over a three-year period, on average, we welcomed 158 per year.
And that would be somewhat of that offset to the 208, right, that was being projected? So the reality is, it would be much more like, what'd you say, it was 150 something, right?
183 from 22.
So the average, the average was 150?
Oh, 158 per, yes, per year, on an average, three years.
All right. So say it's about, about that, right? Going forward, our real number of enrollment is more like, you know, less than 100, and it's probably less than 75 in terms of a decrease if you keep that average going.
Right, right. If we continue on that projection.
And as you mentioned, Roger, it's, it's not part of one of the assumptions a demographer uses when they do enrollment forecasting, because they can't.
Right.
Right.
Right, okay.
But that doesn't necessarily mean we have new families in. We may have some students that keep the classification for a longer period of time.
Those are new, though, right?
No, these are newly enrolled. These are the trends that you're seeing. I, what I did was, so from 342 to 585, there were 243 newly identified multilingual learners. From, I'm sorry, you can't see me, poison. From 2018 to 2019, 2019 to 2020, the difference between those two was 243 newly identified multilingual learners.
Those are net new.
Newly identified.
So, so the district-wide number of students classified as English language learners would be higher than that, of those numbers?
No. So 500, so if you're looking at 342.
Right, right.
Those are all our multilingual learners that are identified.
That's across the district?
On, in 2018, 2019, yes.
Right.
In 2019, 2020, there were a total of 585. So the difference between 585 to 342 are the newly enrolled students.
But some of the, theoretically, some of the 342 could have been declassified.
Or, or extent, or, or not declassified, right? Like, because you can come off, you have to reach a certain standard before you come off. That's what I was asking, yeah.
These.
But I don't know that it's that material to get to the bottom of it, but.
But even if you did the pluses and minuses, your delta is still the delta. That's not going to change.
The difference.
Because some years, you could have it up, some years, you could have it down based upon that. And we won't ever know that in this data. But, but if you just take that trend, and I think the point that we're trying, I was trying to make in asking the question was that we, if we just think of that in the context of facilities and everything else, it's not, we're seeing a massive, like, a 208 loss of students. That's not the case, right? Because that's not, that, they don't know this.
Right.
They don't have this.
Right, right.
And we don't know the, so there are different reasons why, you know, we have newly enrolled multilingual learners.
That's right, that's right.
So, and it's.
So our space constraints remain as it is.
Yes.
Because of this factor.
This could be one of the.
When I presented this information to Barbara, so obviously, you know, the 342 could have left and not still be here in 21, 22. They could have. But, but again, these are just current numbers as a trend. She said this is a piece of information that they don't include in their formula for enrollment forecasting because they can't. It's just too fluid.
So for example, on October 23rd, we had 1,000 students, identified multilingual learners. As of yesterday, we have 1,006 with various more on the list to be screened. So in two weeks, we've already had, we've welcomed two more children, multilingual learners.
And just as we think about that, it's like, is it all Spanish? Are we seeing new languages coming in? And it's just, it's something to think about for resources. Yeah, I just don't know what.
Absolutely.
And this is, we're going to do a deeper dive into this on the 29th.
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
Yes. So that's our five-year enrollment view. The next one, if you thought the other one was busy. This is, so please know that the New York State English as a Second Language Achievement Test, which we know is the NICE slot, is the assessment that measures language proficiency, and all multilingual, identified multilingual learners take it. So all 1,006, if we were administering it right now, would be taking the NICE slot in every grade. The assessment is divided by grade bands. This for the first, so we have the K grade band. We have the, right, I'm just speaking to the assessment right now, and then we'll look at the data. We used to have the K, the 1-2 grade band, first grade and second grade. However, for this year, for the first time, they've split that grade band. So our children this year will be taking a first grade NICE slot, second grade NICE slot, and the rest of the grade bands are 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and then a 9, 12. So all high schoolers take pretty much the same NICE slot because it's a 9, 12 assessment. This assessment is divided into the four modalities of language, speaking, listening, reading, and writing. Speaking, they give us a month to administer because the assessment is administered individually. And then in May, for two weeks, they give us a two-week window to administer the listening, reading, and writing, which comes together. It's three, it's three different booklets.
It's a very labor-intensive assessment, and it's been another, I have to give Dr. Sanchez and Dr. Kazada from Yonkers huge credit for advocating about you're taking their teachers away from their students in terms of instruction to administer a very labor-intensive assessment.
Very much so. So.
That's on a lag.
Yes.
It violates the state testing cap between the time they take the two sets of tests.
So, exactly. So the ELA is a two-day assessment. The mathematics is a two-day assessment. Every, so that's four days. Every English language learner then takes one day of speaking and then takes a three-day listening, reading, and writing. So from April to May, five assessments. I mean, five, eight assessments, sorry.
And that's eight, is, that's five days of instruction taken away from kids?
Eight days.
Eight, eight.
Of being assessed.
Eight days of instruction.
The speaking normally takes, I mean, it's not a whole day, but yes. It's about, depending on proficiency of the child. The assessment identifies, as you can see, to your, to my right, the different levels of proficiency. So we have entering, emerging. We have transitioning, expanding. And commanding is the level where the child has meet, has met proficiency in the English native-like proficiency in English. And a child that scores commanding on the NICE slot receives two additional years of service to support them as they transition without their services. Just a minute. And as you can see, this is the data that we review. This is split by, again, we did a two-year comparison, and it is divided by grade.
Right. So again, it's not as if, the point that Maria made, again, in terms of facilities, that even if a student is no longer as an L because they are in commanding, they still get two years of services.
Yes, they do. And we, on the system, the state has them identified as L, we call them former Ls, so Fels, Fel 1 and Fel 2, which their first year, and then their second year.
With all of this data that you have that's come out, where, if you were making a recommendation of what, where you really, where, where the most amount of support is needed, I mean, I've got all sorts of questions and issues about the way this is done, but that's another story. But I think here, it's just, what would, where would you say that the absolute, you know, here, we need to support very heavily here because this will set the base and platform going forward for the kids?
Well, you know what, Roger? That's a fabulous question. And I also, it's just a preview to the, Maria, I have to give her credit. She brought in the state two consultants to spend two full days in our district to take a look at our English language learner and our dual-language program. So they spent two full days meeting with staff, so they're going to have recommendations. And a lot of this will be part of the presentation that Nancy will give at the next meeting as well, right?
Yes. They spent two, two weeks ago, they were here, and they're still, they're still continuing interviews virtually. And the goal is exactly what you mentioned, highlight successes and what is working well, recommend revisions to the protocols of reviewing and analyzing data to inform placement programming, curricular and instructional decisions as they relate to multilingual learners, strengthen our program structures and instructional practices, and recommend topics for professional learning opportunities to strengthen teaching and learning by empowering our students. The next is our AMD Regents. So at this moment in time, all eighth graders take our Earth Science Regents here in AMD. And as I mentioned before, 49 of our students took our Algebra Regents last year. And as you can see, this is the two-year comparison. So at this moment in time, proficiency level or passing level is 77% for last year for the Earth Science and 100% for our Algebra.
And this is the math honors that you have, that we're looking at, right?
This is the Algebra.
Right, no, I'm just saying, Algebra is given as math honors in eighth grade, right? Not just regular math and math honors?
At this moment in time, we have eighth grade math, we have eight honors, and we have Algebra.
So you're given Algebra in eighth grade, for clarity, to everybody?
No, only 49 of our students. So we have eighth grade math.
Right. Okay, gotcha.
And then we have our eight honors, and then we have our, next year, it'll be eight in Algebra. We presented to, so one of the things that we do here at AMD, we just did it about two weeks ago, we presented to our families the trajectory of our middle school math program and how we were best preparing our children and strengthening our children's mathematical skills and concepts. And we had over 100 families participate in our, in our family, math family night here at AMD, where we presented the trajectory, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade.
Okay. And there will, so for those who are a bit more advanced, there, there's, where, there's more to be challenged in some sort of a, you know, challenging math program, not that something's disappearing, and those students who need the help, they're going to get the additional support.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
And we're preparing, hence, the work that we're doing mathematically to support the pipeline, and then really encouraging our children, those that are ready, to go into their Algebra.
So if we're dropping the honors.
In eighth.
In eighth. So you'll have, I'm going to just call it regular math or Algebra. How's that, I know this might be separate, tangential, but how's that determined, like, if, because right now, you have, you have three things, right? Regular, honors, Algebra. Next year, you're going to have regular and Algebra. How are you sort of determining who, someone wants to get into the Algebra?
So in order to prepare for that, what we did was, we did curricular work this summer in order to ensure that the seven honors course was doing, building the pipeline and building the foundation for that Algebraic foundation to support our children going into Algebra. And then we have our, our seventh grade program, again, high rigorous, standards-based, and supporting them and preparing them for eighth grade. Maybe some of those children will also be ready for Algebra, so giving them that opportunity. So it's really opening access and opportunities for our children through a stronger curricular program in seventh grade. So we'll have our seven honors. We'll have, hopefully, some of our seventh grade math children ready for Algebra as well. And then looking at our, we're also looking at our eighth grade math curriculum and scope and sequence and really embedding. So it's teaching eighth grade through the honors lens.
All right.
Maria, how many students are enrolled in Algebra right now?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five. So I-
So we opened also the opportunities.
Forty-nine to seventy-five this year right now.
We have three sections of Algebra.
If you want to look at math from a seven, twelve perspective, just it's the way I'm used to looking at it, a traditional route would be, is that you would have an accelerated class in seventh grade, which would take your on-grade level, seventh-grade math, on-grade level, eighth-grade math, combine them into one year, and that would be an accelerated class. In preparation for that, in sixth grade, you would embed certain deeper and more enriched topics in, for all kids in sixth grade, and families should understand whether or not they're ready for that accelerated, to offer more of that. And if it's done in a systemic way, you'll see growth. Not all kids in their brains will be ready for that, and that means at the high school level is that when someone is ready for that, the school could offer multiple paths or multiple options for a child to take multiple experiences in math.
That's just to start in the fifth grade, there was an enrichment class of math circles that was done in the, in fifth grade, and it was there for a good number of years. It's not anymore.
So the idea would be to do what we call enriched experiences with level four experiences for all kids at that time and have teaching around that and activities to better support all kids.
And in order to support that, as Superintendent Foxalter said, hence we have the Math Council, the pre-K twelve Math Council, because that's the work that we're doing in order to support and build the pipeline, for lack of a better, build the foundation.
With the change in, in the periods at the middle school and with the goal of getting more students into Algebra across the board and not having, there's been a lot of shifts in this over the years, and one of the criticisms that we got from lots of parents was the cutoff was arbitrary and kids, you know, that line in the sand wasn't really a line in the sand and kids grow at different rates. And so how are we deciding access? Are we letting families decide access, you know, for Algebra? Is it a combination thereof? And how, what are we doing to support getting that number from the forty-nine to the seventy-eight to a higher number at the end of the day?
It's curricular work at grades five, six, and seven, being really clear as to what that is, because you want, you want children to have a successful experience in math.
Exactly.
That is, has to be the key. And in many cases, there's been research studies, I mean, I was part of one where if you, let's say you decide every eighth grader is going to take Algebra. If it hasn't, sometimes some kids aren't ready. And what happens is when they turn, probably when they're in their junior year, when they can now argue back at mom and dad about it, they'll go, I'm done with math, I don't want to do this, I was pushed too early, too fast. So if you schedule your high school right, a child who wasn't ready, let's say, for a lot of reasons, in eighth grade or seventh grade can join when they are in their sophomore or junior year and then double up, if they will, that's a beautiful thing for all kids. But that's a lot of intentionality behind programming and curriculum when you do that. Right. So I love the fact the goal here is that you have now seventy-nine students involved in Algebra this year. I love the fact that at the high school level, they added that extra period to math based upon NWE data for the on-grade level students, so you're helping both groups and the professional development work and the district support. Thank you again to the board, the community, for bringing in a regular math consultant who's helping with that work. And you have a research-based math program called Math in Focus to address those goals.
And the high school has two paths to get to calculus, one for the students that take Algebra in eighth grade and in ninth grade, they can basically accelerate. So if student has a different growth experience, they can still pick up and get calculus in high school.
And that's, that's the goal. Again, it's providing opportunities and access to our children. And in relation to the, to the point that Superintendent Foxalter mentioned, the 1.5 class Algebra course at the high school, you don't have to go back, but I just went back to our 2023 New York State Assessment in eighth grade, and fifty-four percent of our children were at Level One. So not only was the NWA data informing us programmatically for Algebra and ensuring that we, that our children are successful in ninth-grade Algebra, but now our state assessment is also confirming that. So there are a lot of data points, and the data that we engage in is very important in our, in our programmatic decisions. The next component of our, of our presentation is our local assessments. We all know NWA, we all have heard ERLA and ENEAL. So Ms. Turner is going to, I'm going to pass over the baton.
So Ms. Turner. Good evening. I certainly do, as Jessica's getting ready, appreciate very much the interactive nature to this. And again, even the point to reiterate, to send it home, why looking at assessments for trends, whether it was the NWE data or now the state testing data, it arrived at the same point. What did we need to do to support kids at freshman year in their high school experience?
So, good evening. I'm going to orientate us to the data we've been looking at. One point in time proficiency data for grade level in our previous slides, and in this slide, we are looking at growth data. So this is data that measures our students' performance on a growth percentile in relation to their peers that are performing at that same percentile. So what you'll notice here, and I'm going to give a brief overview, and if we want more granular data, we can go into that later, but what you'll typically see here, low performance is zero to twentieth percentile, low average is twenty-first to fortieth percentile, average is forty-first to sixtieth percentile, high average is sixty-first to eightieth, and then high is anything above the eightieth percentile. And when you look at the trends, you see our students are kind of maintaining their growth. And what that means is they're growing an average year along with their peers. And in order for us to increase those, we would have to, we, and so there's room to grow, we have to help them grow more than a year. So where we see a twenty-three percent for a low average in K and a twenty-three percent again, we have to help them improve more than one year's worth of growth.
Sorry. If I'm, if I'm understanding that, if I look across then what, just as a data point that jumps out at me, if I go to the twelfth grade there, I'm seeing-
Sixty-seven percent, yeah.
All right. So it went from thirty-five percent, no, 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 I'm not reading that right.
So you've got to also look at the number of students assessed. So in twelfth grade, there were forty-nine. So it's forty-nine students that were performing at that low percentile, you know, the forty-nine students contribute to the tenth, twelfth grade.
So, okay, that's a total of forty-nine. Oh, God. Okay.
Forty-nine students.
All right. So that's an anomaly.
It is, yeah. Twelfth grade isn't, yeah. We typically assess all of our students K through eleven. And then just as a point of reference, NWA reading, this data includes monolingual and dual-language students. So this data includes our students who took these, who are in all of our programming. And that'll make sense when we go into math, where it's separated out monolingual and dual-language into two separate slides.
So eleventh grade then, use the eleventh grade, if you went from 2022 to twenty-one percent of them in 2022 were low achievement, and then it went to thirty-five percent, but then everything from average to high went down.
Yeah.
Is that, am I reading that correctly?
You are. Mm-hmm. So you can flip this slide. Then you'll see here, this data includes our reading proficiency in Spanish. So this would be our students in a dual-language program who take this assessment. And again, we're looking at fall-to-fall data as one data point. The great thing, we only have one year completed with NWA, right? So as we go winter to winter, we'll be able to add that data point. Spring to spring, we'll be able to add that data point. And we'll be able to monitor our growth and our ability to impact student outcomes by the programming that we're creating and continuing and enhancing.
This is, these are, this is everybody, this is everybody in dual-language?
Correct.
Okay.
So our ENL population would be part of the NWA reading data and our dual-language because they, everyone takes the reading assessment in English, and then the Spanish data is the Spanish assessment. It's important because we're building bilingual students, right? And so we need to assess their ability to speak Spanish and understand Spanish and decode Spanish as well as English. And then the next slide is our NWA math data, similar. You can see where we want our students to fall is in the average, high average, and high, that fiftieth percentile or above. So again, we have room to grow, and we're monitoring it closely. The math data does not include students in the dual-language program. They get to choose if they're taking the, the Spanish assessment data was pulled out of this data. And then the next slide includes the Spanish proficiency. It's, they get to choose which assessment they're taking the math in, so they get to, their dominant language. And then if you go into our ERLA data, I think this is really interesting data to take a look at. When we were thinking about, we have one point at time proficiency and why we use multiple measures and those cut scores that you're talking about in MTSS. And then really, we only get the state data once, right? And you can fake bad, but you can't fake good, which means you could have a bad day on an assessment and get a one, right? But our NWA data and our ERLA data, triangling that data helps us ensure that our students are proficient or not proficient. So one example I pulled, we have, there's, I'm not going to use names, but we are looking at this data intensely. And so first example, we have a student on the ERLA that's at risk, was twentieth percentile in NWA and fell on the New York State exam at Level One. Then we have another student who was proficient in the ERLA, fortieth percentile in NWA, which low average, but was a Level Three on the state assessment. So we are taking those three data points and looking in that, at them, so we can kind of assess our curriculum and instruction and say if, and have confidence in if the ERLA says our students are proficient and NWA says they're average, low average, they're going to be three or four on the state assessment. There are anomalies, right? Those one-offs that have a really bad day on the NWA or the ERLA, whichever one, but that's why you want the three data points. And this data that we're looking at here, the ERLA, what's nice is to see an overall increase in proficiency as we go along from fall to fall. In some cases, I think one of the things to note in the ERLA is that, in this data right here, again, it's only our second year, so we chose to pull the data in the third month of instruction to be consistent with our data pulls. Now we can pull again fourth month instruction and see where the data is going. Fifth month of instruction, we can go back into the system and the data walls that you've seen in previous board presentations, when we had ARC come and present to the board and in updates, you've seen this information. It's also changes, right? So the benchmark changes, I wanted to make sure we understood that this data is a formative assessment and that a benchmark for kindergarten could be, I'm going to say one Y because it's one Y, right? But we don't have the chart in front of, in front of us. That could be the benchmark right now, and tomorrow the benchmark could change because this is ongoing instructional tool to guide our small group instruction.
I want to make one clarification point. As you're talking about triangulating this data, is that those state assessments do, again, can only contain roughly eighty percent of this, our students, and I don't know what a typical profile of a student who's not taking the assessments is, if they're really engaged parents, don't like standardized testing, so they're opting out, or if they're kids who are chronically absent, so they're not taking the test for that reason. But this is going to be reflective of more of our students, right?
Yeah. So this is reflective of all of our students. So what's really great is, is, as we build our muscles and having confidence in the data, if it, ERLA says it's proficient and NWA says it's low average, fortieth, and above percentile, like we have multiple examples of students being proficient on the state assessment, we have, we can stand in confidence and say if those two data points say this, they would be proficient on the state assessment, right? They're meeting those grade level expectations.
And just, so that correlation, I don't know if the board, Mary, everyone else, it might be interesting to see in future presentation, that plotting to see if there is a correlation amongst the three, just, just thinking about that. Just, just on this, I mean, just taking, let's just say, third to fourth grade, so if you do the cohort, if I'm reading correctly, 2022, third grade, twenty-two percent proficient.
And in fourth grade, forty-four percent proficient.
So that's fantastic. I guess the question is, just looking, I mean, that's, you know, again, when I do this in outside board life, I would see some of that and say, wow, that is a big number. We have double and triple confirmed that that is all, even in like with ARC as well, they're like, yeah, that could happen. If you're doing it and everyone's on board, absolutely, you can have a twenty-two percent increase here over a year.
Yeah. So I think another point, yes, we can. And if someone asked, why didn't we see that on the state exam? That's why I pointed out when the state exam happened, we only had eight years of instruct, eight months of instruction, right? And now we're starting a year with our teachers having implemented for a complete year, really understanding the assessment, having stronger, deepening pedagogy practice, pedagogical practices around it. The other thing to point out, proficiency is nice, right? We want proficiency, but the decrease in emergency levels, right? So you look at that same third grade, last year this fall, we had forty-two percent of our students in emergency level. This year, only twenty-four percent, right? So that's another indicator that the instruction is helping our students grow and move more into proficiency.
Right. So again, if you look back on the Math in Focus, of course, COVID interrupted that and so did professional development, but you saw an increase in performance, trend. And you have a research-based program backed by PD, teachers who are doing a really great job, and fidelity of implementation. Here it is, one year of ARC, fidelity of implementation with eight months, and you're seeing a change in that again.
So moving to the next slide, we have our ENEAL data, which is the Spanish side of the ARC formative assessment. And again, you can see a decrease in the emergency levels. And we make, in, in some cases, an increase in proficiency in most cases.
What's the, sorry, I can't see it. What's the population level on the last one that went from like four to forty-five?
What are you looking at?
That's on fifth grade.
Fifth grade?
Yeah, four percent to forty-five percent, yep.
And if you look at the twenty-two, the cohort, it went from three percent.
And you had a number of, in 2022, seventy-one?
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, that's what I was looking for, the, the sample size, right? So, okay.
The sample size is pretty consistent.
It's a, it's a pretty good sample. Yeah, I just wanted to know. I didn't want to, I was just making sure it wasn't an anomaly.
Yeah, the students who take the ENEAL. And again, the ENEAL is assessing language development in Spanish. It's not a translation of the ERLA. So I think that's another-
So if you're, if you're English-speaking, that's your native language, and you take this, this is showing you that, you know, compared to last year, you, four percent of you were, were proficient or above. In 2023, forty-five percent of you were proficient or above, which is an astounding increase.
Yeah.
Yep.
And we have a-
And we have a presentation coming up in December that will share more in depth and granular detail around the ERLA and ANEEL.
In terms of the Y and how it's.
In terms of the Y and some data that's showing a return on investment.
Thank you, Ms. Turner. Now we're up to the high school. If you can see, the, the slide here is graduation rates. Last year's graduation rate was 82. We try to give you as much information as possible. So total number of seniors, number of students who graduated, and then the total percentage. And you can see the trends, it's a five-year trend. So this slide here is our graduation rate specifically to our, for our English language learners. And as we know, as we develop language, it takes a little bit longer for us to develop that cognitive academic language proficiency. Takes about five to seven years. When we are learning language, we have our basic interpersonal communication skills, which normally takes us maybe a year, which we call BICS in the linguistic field. And then we go into our CALP. So as you can see, the four-year cohort is the lowest of each one of them. But the more time we give our children, you'll see an increase of the graduation rates. For the 22-23 school year, if you notice, we don't have a percentage because they haven't graduated yet, we, or not there yet. But we know that we are working with those children to ensure and we're identifying their need to make sure that they are on, on path. The next slide is specific to our special education children, and I will.
So as Maria had mentioned, the graduation rate is approximately 82% for our high school. And the one thing that I do want to draw your attention to is when you look at the four-year graduation rate for our students with disabilities and you begin to look at 2019, 2020, our students, we graduated about 64% of our students with disabilities in four years. We slightly went down in 2021, and then in 2021, 22, we went up to 68%. And then in 22, 23, we're at 76%. So we are slowly closing our, our gap in graduating our students with disabilities within four years, especially with the graduation rate being at 82% and us graduating our students with disabilities at 76%. We still recognize that there's work to be done, but that is showing tremendous growth. I do think that that is also related to a collaboration with the high school, with our assistant director, myself and the high school, looking at data on a regular basis, but also recommending additional options for our students, adding the additional sections of integrated co-teaching in science and in mathematics and in English. So it is expanding our students' opportunities, and I think that that has had a tremendous impact. Now, we do have students that do stay with us for the fifth and sixth year, and we plan for those students because traditionally, it is appropriate for them to be with us for the fifth and sixth year. So you could see that, that our graduation rate for those students are, are 76%, 81%, 69%. And then we have a smaller cohort. So as you could see, the cohort and the number of students dwindles down. So we are anticipating potentially eight students would be part of that fifth-year cohort, and then we would have one student potentially in the sixth-year cohort. So really, our goal is ultimately, we want our students to graduate within four years. It is our goal, and we are hoping that potentially, and here's a push for the bond, if we were to pass the bond and we are to expand at the high school, we would have additional resources to meet our students' needs who would be staying with us for the additional fifth and sixth year. So we are very excited about that.
Let me, sorry, can, can I just ask one?
Sure.
And this is probably, as we think about, you know, all of the presentations that'll be coming over the next several weeks, could we look at a what's working well, I know this is probably explained, what's working well and what needs to change? Can we, can we look at those? Like what's working really well, that's driving the successes? And what else, what could we, what you're asking for to change to help us to do what we need to do better?
I'm sure, I'm hoping for that, the punchline in this would be like, what's our overall, like root cause analysis here, so that we can talk to that after we sort of get through everything.
Yeah, and certainly, I think hopefully you're seeing that fidelity of implementation to two big programs, right? ARC and Math and Focus, a real systematic and structured approach towards supporting our kids at the high school for algebra this year, again, another significant change. And you've seen a growth as a school district in co-taught classes, particularly in the subject areas at the high school. That's really been a key factor in students with disabilities, and I want to thank the board for that because that's more expensive. It is absolutely more expensive, but it has success rate here. The one area you will find right now, and it will come out during the facilities meeting, is that we, I had a conversation today, we all did, with Principal Langley. She's trying to schedule AIS classes. She doesn't have a spot for the teachers to teach for, or for kids to meet and to do that at the high school.
It's not, it's not the first time.
No, so, so again, you know, like, we're going to identify those resources that are even Kim and I, when we, you know, living in the land, which I love of special education, Kim and I had a conversation, where are the life skills classrooms? Where, where are we doing about that? So again, we'll be more than happy to share that and entwine that as we go forward, right?
Yeah, that, that would be really good because I think, I want to be able to see how much we tie into, when we look at the, let's, let's simplify this, the stops, the starts and continues, right? What are the start, the stop, starts and continues of what, what needs to be done? Because ultimately, all of these play into the programming and the space needs of what we, we're going to have based upon the different grades that we're affecting, right? And all of the thing, the numbers here to support, right? So, you know, and just what Catherine said, is a root cause analysis of what's really driving these numbers that'll help to inform the stop, starts and continues.
Our next slide speaks to our dropout rates. I think it's, we think it's important that we really are transparent with all our data. And we have children that unfortunately drop out. So as you can see, our trend, it's pretty much maintained itself at 2%, 2%, 3%, but even one child is, is a lot. I did speak to Mr. Dukos today, and this data is also on, on our state report card. We're finding out that there are multilingual learners, mostly within these numbers, that are dropping out. So again, looking at the, at the root cause to ensure that we minimize, you know, our goal would be zero, obviously. But this is work that we are engaged in to ensure that we are addressing all need. Hence the work that we're doing with our social, emotional and work and ensuring that we are creating in our schools a welcoming and affirming environment where children see themselves and feel a sense of belonging.
Can I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
So in terms of dropping out, do we, what are the factors in that? So is it simply that the child has just kind of dropped off the radar and never come back? Or there's some type of formal, I don't plan on ever coming back? Like what is, how do we categorize this?
So one of the biggest is the over, the overaged, undercredited.
Okay.
So our young, youngsters that enroll in our schools and they may be 17, 18, and they just don't have the time to graduate because at 21, compulsory education ends at 21. So they are considered dropouts.
They are counseled. So if a student is at that point where they do want to not continue at the high school due to various reasons, they do meet with the director, the school counselor and the parent, and options are provided. So for example, information about moving forward with a GED program is made available to the family and to the child. And then we also have the option of students enrolling through BOCs with, which would be the task program, which is formerly the, which is formerly GED, which is really the HSC program now, which would allow a child to acquire their high school equivalency through BOCs as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Just to clarify, on the, the previous slide for graduation rates, when we, when we say the term students with disabilities, are we, are we generally basically saying all students classified with individual education plans?
That is correct.
Okay.
And I also want to point out, it's when the child enters. So your cohort year begins freshman year. So you enter, and that's your cohort year, and then four years from that point is your graduation date.
Thank you.
That's why on the table with the graduation rates, you saw the cohorts identified in color. We try to color code it because that's the cohort that they belong to, and that's what identifies fifth year, sixth year.
Thank you.
So we have our regents at the high school, passing rate for two-year comparison, obviously with our Lyric. As you can see here, we are pretty much on par with the, with the region when it comes to our regents, and at various points, we exceeded the region. So the first group of bars are, are ELA. Our second group of bars is the Algebra I, because I know you can't see the bottom. Then the Algebra II, the Geometry, the Global History, and the last two bars are the US History. So we're pretty much on par with the, with the region. The next slide, so I'm not sure if you're aware, but our children need five regents in order to graduate. The ones with the big burgundy circle are the ones that are, are required. It's either, and you'll see six, I know you see six there, but it's also, it's between the global and the US history, so they do have a choice in social studies. And those are our proficiency.
Right, or even in science, too.
And in science, they have.
You could have the choice as well.
And then here's the passing rate in just a different form, and how many students for each of our regents.
I guess, I, I just have to go back to something that was, we were talking about earlier, which was around how many kids are being put into algebra? Actually, go back to that other slide. How many kids are being put into algebra? And my, my question is, you have.
This one?
Yeah, this is good. If we put more kids into algebra that may have some struggles, and would that change, say, next year was it 75, I think was the number, that was going, that's going to go into algebra? Would that, would you see a decrease in the pass rate? Because there, you know, do, the readiness for algebra, is that there? At, to, you know, is it sufficient enough to be able to say, hey, everybody's there? Because I almost feel like, you know, there's, that these numbers by themselves just, I'm not sure what this is going to look like when we think about next year, right? Because we're, particularly for the algebra.
You're speaking to the 75 that are currently on, that will be taking the regents this year.
At AMD.
At AMD, yes. So they will be included in next year's.
Right, but will that, if you're bringing them in there, are they, assuming that, that that's, they're ready and prepared, they've been given everything that's needed, will they be in a, will, will we see the pass rate stay the same, do we think, based upon what we know?
Well, we're hoping that they're successful and that they're, that they're ready to take their assessment and, I'm sorry?
It was 100% this year, so it's likely not to be 100%.
That's what I'm, that, that's exactly where I was going. It's likely to be a lower.
Right.
Well, it's 100% passing rate. So within that passing rate, it's different grades. It isn't that everybody got 100%, 100% on the.
So 65 to whatever the cut score.
It could be from 65 to, exactly.
And don't forget, also, you want to think about how many students sat for that exam.
Right.
So it may not be 50 students. So 100% passing rate could be the number of students that took it, and that could be a handful for that particular test.
And for the, the scale to raw score conversion for the regents exams, once you hit 85 to 100 is pretty much the same. The bell curve occurs when you go from 65 to 84.
I have a clarifying question about the previous slide. Yeah, Earth Science. So that looks rough to me. We have, now, and it says OHS regents, but we're doing Earth Science in eighth grade? So is.
So there are, there are certain students that took the Earth Science in high school that did not take the Earth Science in AMD.
These are, so what's reflected here is just high school students, not the eighth grade students?
No, these are our high school students.
Thank you.
And 69% of them, if I'm reading that correctly, failed the Earth Science test.
Yes. And so it speaks to the fact that most probably, because we have the highest enrollment of multilingual learners at the high school, I am thinking, and I need to look at the data, it could be that we, those were our multilingual learners. Because our students that came in from, obviously, eighth grade, took it in eighth grade.
How does not being able, or how does not getting a regent's pass in Earth Science affect overall graduation?
So are, they have to be successful in the regents? Are, they are able, I believe, one appeal? They're able to.
Yeah, they can upon graduation, but you just need a science credit. So if it's not Earth Science, it certainly could be the living environment. I hate to say it is the easiest of the regents, because I use that word very loosely.
Yes.
However, because so much of life, like seventh grade, like for example, seventh grade is all living environment. A lot of places choose to make the eighth grade regent's exam the living environment because they would have had two years and you might see a higher success rate there. And then people check off that exam, I took it, I got my credit for graduation, I'm great. And then you can take multiple different science courses at the high school level if you choose to.
So I guess what I'm wondering is when we're looking at like the percentage of students that aren't, are, are not graduating, is there any commonalities in there such as there's a certain percentage that just needed that science course and they didn't get it and they didn't graduate?
So, Mary?
Yes.
So a big, a really big thing to look at, especially at the high school, is that when a ninth grader falls behind, and that's either failing a course, the regents, but needs to end up taking a repeater, to repeat the course in 10th grade, that significantly impacts the four-year graduation rate. It is very, very, I'm not saying that it's impossible to catch up, but if a student does not pass, or if they fail two courses, more than two courses, in ninth grade, and you're unable to acquire those course credits in summer school, it really, really impacts your graduation rate. So traditionally, when you look at the data historically, your ninth graders, if you have a certain percentage that are not successful, you can almost mirror that that is the percentage of your graduation rate.
Okay, so in terms of, from the board's perspective and budgeting, allocating resources to this particular issue is probably going to be something we can expect to be asked for as we move on during budget season?
Yes.
Even things like, I don't mean, because I recognize the hour, it's 10 o'clock, but like the living environment, you can't sit for the living environment regent's exam unless you complete the four labs. So having your early warning tracking system on target to make sure that kids have completed the four lab in a timely fashion, so they can sit for the exam, is another complication that guidance needs to pay attention to at the high school level.
And how do faci- And how do facilities affect the ability to sit for the four labs, if at all?
Well, we do have science labs in classrooms, but again, yeah.
But also, our classrooms are shared.
Yeah, but they're shared, so it's trying to find the time to do that, and if you miss it all along, very hard.
And also, this is the work that we're doing now. Our first quarter at the high school is over, so now it's looking at the data and seeing how successful or not our children were, and then putting actions, action plans in place to address that. So we're monitoring as we go.
I would like to see a little bit more of a deeper dive into this, because I would imagine if this was multilingual learners, it wouldn't just be Earth Science.
What slide?
I mean, I think fair to say, like, as a board, we probably want, like, a recommendation on what, what admin needs in order to fix this particular.
Right.
Issue, whatever that might be.
Thank you. Advanced Placement AP exam, this is a five-year comparison. Now, AP exams, in order to be successful on an AP exam, you don't pass or fail it, you're successful on it, is defined as a score of three or higher. So an AP, unlike the state assessment that goes up to four, we have in APs, it's three, four, and, or five, one, two, three, or four, or four, five, which represents the core point that research finds predictive of college success and college graduation.
I will say, though, as a, you know, huge proponent of open enrollment in AP exams, sometimes just the AP experience itself, even though a child might get a one on the exam, is such a worthwhile activity. So while it's great to see those numbers here, just having the ability for children to be exposed to an AP class in terms of open enrollment is a really good thing.
So can I just ask, there was a definite trend line, which we went from 216 to 151 on the students, and the exams, 334 to 224, and also downward trend on the scores. Is, did we find out the reason for all that?
For the dip?
For the, yeah, students, exams, and the three, four, five scores.
No, I will find out.
Okay.
I will get you the details on that.
And again, in many cases, the exam is seen as optional.
Right. And I think we've had an increase in college-level courses that we offer.
Well, that's, yeah, as a single take, you can, 100%.
I'm not saying we have this, but we may see that we have a decrease in the number of kids taking AP exams, because we have an increase of, in the number of students who are choosing to take college courses instead.
The SUNY math class, the SUNY, whatever, the dual, so they turn around, I'm getting SUNY credit for it, I don't need the AP exam, I'm gonna enroll in that.
Right. It is, because the SUNY, you're getting credit for that. This, you may or may not get credit.
Right.
Even if you have a three, in some cases, even if you have a four.
Five.
Whereas, like, the SUNY, because we've got such a good, robust offering with SUNY, that gives us more of that. I, when I saw this, I'm like, this is because of our SUNY.
Are the SUNY credits only good at SUNY schools, or do you apply it anywhere?
Anyone would take a credit from a state college.
Got it.
Which is a wonderful thing.
Which saves our families thousands of dollars.
Yes, it does.
And I will vouch for that, in being in that position. You know, some students go in as second semester sophomores with the amount of credits they get.
Exactly.
And that is a huge savings for graduate work, or undergraduate work, whatever you're doing.
Right, right.
It's a great thing.
My daughter went into Biggerton almost a year into her sophomore year.
And you'll see kids then deciding, four years of college, I'm gonna do, get my masters at the same time for this saving money.
Opens up, yes, it does.
It's many options, it's just a beautiful thing that Osning, is offered at Osning High School.
You pretty much go towards an associate's degree.
Exactly.
It makes college affordable for families, which is a great thing for the district we serve.
Absolutely.
Great opportunity, very proud of that. Our next, and there are a lot of slides here, so we're not going to go into them, I just wanted to share with you the importance of sports and everything that's offered, and the increase, as, and you can review it, if you'd like, we can review it here, but you can review it, there's been a steady increase of students participating in sports, and us offering different, expanding our opportunities in offering sports. And it goes through our varsity, and junior varsity, and modified.
Right, so I just want to give Chris Herrera a shout out, because when we asked him, he was very excited to talk about the work with the Scholar Athletes. He pays attention to all of that, meeting with the coaches, taking a look at the Guidance Department. And to me, this is about a level of a student engagement, sometimes by the fact that, you know, an athlete might have a game or a practice, is the whole motivation to sit through calculus in the, at first period. But again, I just, and also, because this is a resource that the Board of Education supports and adopts, and you have really nice participation rates at the modified level, and at the high school level, and they are paying attention to that Scholar Athlete approach towards it, so it's just a nice, fun piece of data to share.
And in addition to that, so under his leadership, under Mr. Herrera's leadership, intramurals, we are offering intramurals at the elementary level for grades three through six, boys and girls soccer, lacrosse, basketball. We also offer four different weeks during breaks and summer camps of intramurals, flight football, wrestling, field hockey, so at the younger, providing opportunities for our younger scholars. Also, in partnership with our MTSS and AIS, and in partnership with Ms. Turner, and what Superintendent Fox Alter mentioned, Scholar Athletes. So fall of last year, we had 58 fall athletes who had failed two or more subjects. This year, we have 37. We started our year with 37, which carried over from last year, and by the end of the first semester, at this moment in time, only nine, which is still too many, but only nine are still failing two or more. So that is some, that is really intentional work that we're doing with our Scholar Athletes, and ensuring that it is not an option to fail not even one course, so that's great work. And it's through tutoring, offering tutoring opportunities, daily study holes, tutoring opportunities through the Einstein Program, and also in collaboration with the classroom teachers, so they're also going into the classrooms, him and his assistant director. So great work.
So was that section meant to cover, because I see, the slide starts off with Athletics, Physical Education, and Health. So was it just focused on monitoring the impact of people being on sports teams, or is it also taking into consideration some of the alternatives to physical education credits that we are offering students?
No, this is just athletics. I put his whole department, the title of his department, but this was just highlighting our sports.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Your co-curricular.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, and I think it's wonderful that we're collecting that data, and it's really fantastic. I will say, something the board's asked for in the past, that would really, I think we need to add to this, is our extracurriculars that fall outside the athletic program.
Right, yeah.
Students in the arts, students in club participation.
I planned on that, Frank, but in too short a period of time to gather all that, but it's on my radar, and I will include it.
I get it, and I'm not, you know, it's something, I think, this is gonna fall into the connectedness rate.
Yeah.
And the question that I'm gonna, you know, and we'll get to the panorama slide there, but one thing, and I don't know if there's obstacles or not, but being, having the board be able to see the data around each of the grades, and their connectedness of the students is very important, I think.
And that's beautifully said, because that's what that Scholar Athlete meant to be.
And that's a piece of it, that's a piece of it.
And there are multiple pieces of it, but I think it's something they're not used to here, and when we were preparing for this report, because we still have attendance data and other things. But I, absent my heart of hearts, you just spoke volumes to how I look at that, so yes, we will, we will be collecting that as well, because, and they become leverage points that you can use to help kids cross that finish line.
Exactly, and from a resource standpoint, and a budgetary, are we offering options for students equivalent for, which you tap funded for an athletics program? Are you doing that for your clubs? Are you doing this for the other engagement pieces at the end of the day?
All of the above.
Right. So thank you, I appreciate that.
Sorry, taking notes.
Attendance.
Attendance matters, and attendance matters all day, every day. So our next slide, absolutely.
Sorry, Maria, just for the sake of, just to, I'm aware of the time, it's 10 after 10, but just to highlight here, New York State actually flags students in a category of just two, basically chronically absent. Chronically absent is 10% of the year. So a student who misses, if it's 180 days, if they miss 10% of that, they are considered chronically absent, even if those absences are excused, even if they're excused, if you had a child who broke his leg, or whatever, even if they're excused. In terms, I have to give Osning a huge shout out here, in terms of tracking, though, attendance here, they have added other categories, meaning warning systems as leading up to that, meaning that someone that might be moderately chronic, that could be someone who's out for 10 days. So in order to increase attendance and see kids' participation in school actively there, it's basically being able to set up these models and bands, and serve as a warning flag system for it. So kudos to everybody for that, not just the state chronically absent and leave it be.
No, we definitely wanted to identify early warning signs, and make sure that we are intervening and supporting families to make sure that our children are where they belong in our classrooms.
So you've got at-risk, and you've got moderately chronic before you hit the state level of it.
And you see the breakouts.
I almost wonder to, just, and this is not for now, but as we think about this for later, is the at-risk, that's a pretty large number that's there, and I know in the high school, for, there are some students who do get excused absences for the things they've got to do, so, you know, if you took those out, and I don't think they're a huge population, you know, what does that look like? And do we have any causality for somebody at risk?
I mean, you could pull out the excused absences from it, from the, I mean, I guess, depending upon how they're flagged, I'm pretty sure they're coded in Infinite Campus that way, but if you look at the at-risk, we're talking 5% to 9% out of 180-day, you know, it's, you could do five college visits and end up on that at-risk list.
Right, that's, that's right, so that's why, you know, it's at-risk of what, if you're, kind of, this is part of what you have to do, right?
But that's why the administration, in terms of when they use this data, they look at it through a data portal, which will show a whole group of other things as well.
So how do you dive into absenteeism, when it differs between the lower grades and the upper grades, where there's missing the whole day of school, or there's missing X amount of classes for the day? Like, what is, how does that shift, and is it represented in the data points?
Yes, it is. Dr. Dealy, I know that Dr. Dealy works very closely with the attendance, when it comes to, by course, so are we cutting? That would be other types of data, but they're also included. Dr. Dealy, do you want to?
There's a certain percentage of the day that shows that students are attending, giving credit for the day, if they don't attend so much, they don't get credit for that day, so we are kind of looking at similarities across elementary, because essentially, if they miss so much of the day, they're considered absent.
Right.
Or vice versa, if they attend so many periods, they get credit for being present for the day.
And that's when we speak to disaggregating the data, and really getting deeper into it, and like we said before, each one of these data points has a narrative, has a story, and that's where now we, it goes from the district, which is what you're seeing here, to the school, to the, to the class, or to the grade, to the class, to the child. And that's the work that are, if you look at our next slide, these are the different tiers of, right, of interventions, of improving, and tiered systems to support. But I'd like to go to the next slide, which are the different actions that I just alluded to. These are our Tier One actions, where this is where, either at the high school, our house meetings, or we also have our house teams, we also have our attendance committees at every building at the elementary, who analyzes this data on a weekly basis, and then the district team comes together on a monthly basis. So we are on, we are monitoring this data on an ongoing basis. Very important here to really highlight is the importance, and like to thank the board for your support, and family engagement specialists. They are critical to this work. The liaisons and the connections that they support each building with is really important, and also it provides that individualized outreach, where we can really personalize the support and the resources provided to the family, so we really appreciate that. And President Crossling, you mentioned about root cause identification here in Tier Three. We actually, we engage that, engage in that review of data through a root cause identification. And each one of these, you have the PowerPoint, each one of these is a link, so you can see it.
Click on them, and you can see what they are, right?
Any questions on that? And by the way, today, we really experienced something firsthand in our efficacy and evidence. Today, we were at Brookside, and efficacy and evidence meetings, our checkpoints, our colleagues presented their action plans, so, and we committed to the fact that we are monitoring the success, how we're really meeting what we committed to do in our action plans, and our action steps that we're taking, and today we engaged with Brookside, and they have an amazing plan, where they're giving incentives, they're reaching out to parents, they're already looking at their chronically absence, and really addressing the need, and they're already seeing, from October to November, they're already seeing a decrease, so.
I promise you, I will not talk a long period of time. Some of this data, you have already had a preview of when Dr. Lopez presented, and it's really around the culture of care. I first want to acknowledge and thank the board for approving and passing us having additional social workers and psychologists. But I also need to acknowledge that with the additional staff, we are running out of space across the board, in our elementary schools and our high schools, so, at our high school. So what has occurred is, we've identified need around social emotional supports, especially coming out of COVID. Do we believe that it was just COVID? We believe that COVID exacerbated, and has shown that our students needed additional support. So through that process, we asked for additional social workers and psychologists throughout our buildings. But with that, there was an unintended cause of running out of office space. So some of the things that we really, really love to do with our students, which is small groups, which is giving students an opportunity to have individual connection with their social workers and psychologists on a more regular basis, and more frequent basis, with the lack of office space, it prohibits as much as we could possibly do. So I also want to just put that out there, just around the whole entire process. So as you can see in this slide, there are two, there's actually a DESA Mini, which is given to all teachers to assess their students, which is an eight-question questionnaire, and through this DESA Mini, it's administered for grades, for students in grades K through six. That information is delineated out, and that's how we determine how students are tiered, and it makes a determination if a student needs a DESA comprehensive. Dr. Lopez is working with our social workers right now, delineating that data. That will be utilized to make a determination around the administration of the DESA comprehensive, which will then allow our social workers to do more intensive work with specific students that have, that have been identified. So this gives you really an overview of the DESA Mini survey. So as you can see, Tier One really is... So as you can see, tier one really is our students are benefiting from what we're providing at our tier one level. That includes our second step curriculum. It can also include PBIS. So these are all terms that we have visited in the past. So a majority of our students are responding to those types of interventions that are provided at tier one. At tier two, students need that additional support as well as tier three. So in tier two and tier three, that is when we're tapping into our social workers and our psychologists to either provide additional small groups that are targeted and focused on particular strategies and skills that students need. And then tier three is sometimes related to doing a functional behavioral assessment depending on students' needs or providing additional supports, which is provided by our psychologists and social workers. So the DESA demographics in grades K through six shows that at tier one, we have approximately 2,029 students that fall within the tier one. Tier two, we have approximately 268 students. And at tier three, we have approximately 31 students. Out of that collective number, 357 of those students have IEPs. So what we really want to emphasize is that tier two and tier three is where that intentionalized support is being provided by those clinicians. When you look a little bit further down the slide, it breaks down male and female. So one of the highlights from this is that at tier one, you have more female students that fall in that category, only slightly. But when you look at tier two and tier three, we have more male students that are requiring additional assistance. So one of the things that we hope and that we look at are programs that we currently have within our district, making connections through MBK, but also with the potential of having male role models within the building that students can also connect with as well. But that would be our targeted area that we would really want to focus in on, especially at tier two and tier three, which would be our male students. This is broken down by race. So I will highlight where we're finding the greatest need, especially in tier two and tier three. Tier two and tier three, we are looking at our white students and students that are black. So we really want to make sure that we are collecting data, but making sure that we are supporting our students based on what our DESA survey is telling us and where our need is with, with intentionality. That may also come through budget season, which, which may be additional requests around additional programming and different types of supports that we feel are needed to address those needs. On the next slide, which will, is a continuation of our demographics. And as you can also see, that at tier two is our ethnicity around Hispanic, which is another targeted area for us as well as, well free and reduced lunch, which is really difficult right now to truly collect since the district has moved to everybody is receiving breakfast and lunch. So it's really hard to monitor that. But I will say that we are, I'm working very closely with Dr. Lopez in regards to looking at students that fall within tier two and tier three. In turn, she will work with the social workers in order to just address those students' needs. But we also look and take a deep dive with our students with IEPs. Panorama survey is our overall additional survey that our staff participate in. So this is where we talked about the sense of belonging. So our staff was given the survey on Monday. So all staff members had 15 minutes to complete the survey. We are also having families complete the survey. And we are also administering the week of November 13th to our middle school, high school, and Roosevelt students. When Dr. Lopez does come back and report out on additional data, she will be sharing with you the results of this survey. When she initially presented to you and she based some of her suggestions and some of the work that we were doing, that data was based off of last year's data. So this will give us an overview of where we are for this year. One additional AMD and OHS will have a substance abuse behavioral counselor. We are in the process right now of hiring an individual that will be at Osning High School. And that counselor will be moving, the current counselor will be moving to AMD. So we are very excited because with that, we will also be able to address mental health needs as well. So that's very, very exciting. Any questions before I turn it back over?
I've got a question. The DESA shows our K through six numbers, right? What about seven to 12? Like what do we do there or what's the plans for seven to 12?
So that's where we use the panorama. But we are in discussion around how we can strategically do the DESA seven through 12. One of the barriers of administering the DESA seven through 12 is if the students were assessing themselves, it's, it would be significantly easier. But because the DESA Mini is completed by the classroom teacher, when you get seven through 12, the teachers have multiple students. So we just have to figure out who would be the best individual that could complete the DESA. So we're in the process of having those conversations right now. We have not come to a conclusion at this point in time, but we are trying to work through it and figure out who would be the best individual. Cause it would really be nearly impossible for one teacher at the middle school and high school that potentially could see 100 students in a day based on the sections that they teach. So we just want to make sure that we're choosing the right individuals to do that.
Right. Or I guess maybe the house system somehow plays into that as well.
And that's what we're looking at?
Yeah. Yeah, it seems like that's a ripe time for somebody to be doing the assessment of seven, grade seven through 12. I mean, it's clear it's important across all the grades, but seven and eight in particular, I think are tough ones.
We agree. Absolutely.
Great question, Frank.
Thanks.
We've come full circle. We know that we presented a lot. What we just wanted to do is bring you back to our work this year and where our pillars and where our action plans came from. Hence everything that you saw and you heard this evening are anchored on these, on these four pillars. And we hope that throughout our conversation, you saw each one of them reflected in the work that we're engaged in on a daily basis. The next slide is the one before the last one, before the thank you and the questions. I'm going to give you a little background. It's going to be a lot. But the reason why it is a lot is because it actually operationalizes what you're seeing on the screen right now. And it addresses each one of our priorities. So this is 2023, 2024. And this is the work that we're all engaged in.
And that's what you heard tonight anyways, just tying it with the bow.
On one page.
Sorry, sorry.
Well, work on one page, right?
You can read later, you can read later.
Exactly. And thank you. Thank you for the opportunity.
Wow. Thank you. I feel like we just did a year's worth of board work in like one night. So that was incredibly comprehensive. I just want to thank all of you for your clear time and effort that was put into this and for being so patient with all of our questions and as we went through the process. I, I thought it was like a really great board cabinet dialogue. Really, I think for me, you hit all of my sort of questions and thank you for that. And I am going to just ask my, I'm sorry, I'm really, I'm tired. I'm not making the most cohesive amount of sense, so I'm going to ask my colleagues if they have anything else they would like to add.
Thank you.
Thank you. That looked like a lot of work. I have one question on slide 25. I just, I could be reading the, or interpreting the slide incorrectly, but it looks like a lot of the, the Spanish math. It's very low and it looks like the proficiency level drops as the grades go up. And I was just wondering, is there a specific reason for that? And do we have any way to support those kids, especially kids who might be in the dual language program who can't afford a tutor or, this is something I asked like last.
So we have noticed a trend. We, again, we have only one year's worth of data and so we're watching it very closely. I don't mind sharing it in another data presentation. One of the things that you will see in our upcoming board request is that our math, previous to the American Relief Funds, we did not have math AIS support. We added them through those funds and that, that funding sunsets at the end of the school year. So we are also, you'll see there'll be a request for bilingual AIS staff to help support language acquisition in content areas. So that we could continue supporting our students who are in bilingual literacy. But in math and overall, actually in our NWA data, when we were watching it grow up, there's a district report we could share, you can see the gaps kind of grow as our students move up. I think it just speaks to the fact that we use data to make informed decisions about curriculum now. And we hope that as the cohort of students, say for example, I always lean on ARC because it's the example in my domain, but it's also math in focus, right? Our, our kindergarten students had it last year for the first year, so we'll watch that cohort grow up and hopefully see the improvements and outcomes that we want to see based on that. But there's, those are the two things you're going to see coming up in our requests.
Thank you. And then the other one, the other question, you can like point me to look this up somewhere. What is our four year to six year graduation rate, like four year versus six year? You don't have to answer that, you can tell me to Google it or whatever.
Do you want an overall graduation rate?
Yes. Thank you.
All right, guys, anything else?
No, I'll just say thank you. And also like, I guess down the road I would be interested. And I don't know if we've had this data before, but the percentages or the, is it trending upward? I guess with other national standards as far as students, increased, increased students classified with IEPs. And trying to figure out the correlation, a lot of the data out there is trying to figure out, is it just that there's less things being stigmatized and people are just coming forward to get those resources? Or is it, is it a, a correlation between more rigorous kind of classroom, you know, whether it be standardized testing and all these other things that are kind of tying up the classroom or, and, but the resources are not really matching kind of them, increased rigorous classroom activity. So I, as we go into budget season and things, and we've been speaking about it, but I'd like to see particularly if we can make sure that our resources are really alleviating the, I guess the inability for certain student needs to be met within a general classroom setting? Or is it truly just kind of this wave, this trend that we're seeing, I guess nationwide in terms of that? Which people are still trying to research, but I'm interested in us being able to assess that as well. Even for an example that was given, it's like, you know, when it comes to certain resources in classroom, when we're talking about reading things, people will, will drill down and make sure that kids aren't dealing with dyslexia. But if someone's struggling in math, do we give resources for people struggling, that may be struggling with dyscalculia, I think it's called? Right, like there's so many, like are, are we really being equitable in the resources for the struggle areas within the classroom setting? Or is it, you know, it's a real long winded way of saying, I'd like us to really kind of, as a board, be able to really look at how we're allocating resources to increase the, I guess, the, the resources within a general education setting.
So during the presentation on November 29th, I promise it will not be this long because I don't know if I could talk that long. But I will be able to give you an overview of our current numbers in special education. I will be sharing with you the programming that we have for our students at the elementary level and at the secondary level, which will include the new 813 program that started last year and the type of curriculum that we are utilizing for that particular program. We will also be talking about the new program that started at the high school, which is the LINKS program and some of the resources that we are putting into that program to help our students go out of district. So we are trying to put things in place that are keeping our students with us. And then we will also explain the different levels of service and the different types of resources that are within each level of service in that presentation. And then I will also give an overview of data by building and classification rate by race as well as gender. Thank you.
Just, I want to, I want to thank you for, it's not easy to be transparent. And you know, there's a lot of work that's going on in the community with, in the, within the schools. And we know some of this, you know, you're still teasing out and trying to figure out. And really appreciate you bringing the visibility to it, you know, even with all the challenges of that. And just want to commend you for the work there. And I don't think you can get to the root of problems without this kind of conversation and seeing what's there. I, I will say in that vein, and you know, since it was raised tonight, you know, about the AIS services at the high school and the, you know, the academic intervention for students and the sound education, I'm really dismayed that we don't have space. And the question I have, and it's really not one for tonight, but the rhetorical question is, what do we need to do in the immediate to address that? Because to me, if we can't offer a sound education to students, then we need to do something to all of our students. We really need to basically take those steps quickly. And so I know there's nothing that happens quickly, but the fact that we don't have space for that, I wonder what else needs to move in order for there to be space for that? Or is there, or are we renting out space in, in places in the community to do something? And what's the real need and all that? But what action are we taking?
We've been thinking about all the above.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. And I just want to add into, there's two different types of AIS supports at the high school. We do have reading teachers that we added in a push-in kind of standalone and math courses. And then there's the AIS tutoring period that we're not having the space that we could talk to later.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much again. And I, I will echo Frank's sentiments. This is really the first time that we just really saw it all in, I don't want to say black and white because it was purple, blue and green. But it really was, I appreciated seeing it because I think when it comes time to understand priorities during budget season, it's really, really important to think back to presentations like this. So thank you very much.
I want to thank the board for identifying this summer the needs and what you wanted and building on each presentation as it leads to the next one. So you can see that particularly before you enter budget season or as you're talking about facilities, it's really important that you have all of this information. I have to give a huge shout out just to the team because this was something they were not used to at all, even the principals. So everyone, a lot of meetings, a lot of work, a lot of looking at stuff, a lot of deep conversations. If you could have been a fly on the wall during our executive cabinet meetings where we dug into all of this. If you could have been a fly on the wall during our executive cabinet meetings where we dug into all of this, I'm just very proud of the work. And now when you get your executive updates from the cabinet, sometimes you can look at them with a different lens, but the level of work that's taking place within the buildings. Fidelity of implementation, purity, keep your eye on the prize, it's about kids. It's about what we can do to improve outcomes for all kids.
It's a great data-driven approach, so, yeah, again, I said thank you. I'll say it again, thank you, really, thank you.
Thank you for your support.
All right, well, speaking of facilities.
I'm just, big plug for everyone come November 15. There are postcards that went out, flyers that hung out, posting on social media. We met, I had a meeting yesterday, Alita, I wish you well. Hopefully you're asleep at this moment, but she actually joined remotely while she was trying to check in with the doctor to get more medicine. So anyway, a lot of work down behind scenes to make sure that we engage the community in many ways and shapes and forms about the reality, about the planning, about facilities. So kickoff, big meeting next week. Hopefully we'll have a lot of people here. That's my plug.
All right, great, well, speaking of people here, it is now time for public comments. We do not have anyone with us any longer in the audience at this point. I don't blame them. There were a few folks who hung in there almost till this point. But I will, we, I think, may have worked out the kinks that we can have virtual public comment this evening. So I will ask Angela if anyone has raised their virtual. Okay. All right, well.
We have people all night.
All right, great.
How many people did we have?
It ranged between like eight and nine, probably.
Okay.
Better than.
More than there are pups in the seats, so.
I think that's an indication too of how good the information that was given, right? People kind of got what they needed and it wasn't much to ask. I'm assuming, right? But, you know, I think that's a good sign of how.
We may have just outlasted them.
It's nothing to do with it being 10:43, but no, I, I, I agree with you, Melissa. I think, I think that the quality of the information was very good. And I think that the, everyone's questions along the ways, the way really added to the presentation nicely. All right, I will take a motion, well, I'll ask, anything anyone wants me to break out from 4.1? You know what, we're gonna take these one by one. I'll take a motion for 4.1.
Some more.
4.1, resolution to appoint consultants for the 2023-2024 school year. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstention. I'll take a motion for 4.2.
Second.
4.2, resolution regarding the Hilda Bonavist distinguished service award. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Okay, I think Mary has something she's going to read in regards to 4.2.
Just very quickly, we want to congratulate a CSEA employee, Gloria Planamenta, Menta, Planamenta, if I'm saying that correctly. She is a CSEA employee at Roosevelt who has worked 25 consecutive years of service, has been highly recommended by her supervisor in writing for her recognition of work. She was promoted from clerk to office assistant to senior office assistant, and she did a ton of extracurricular activities. So congratulations to Gloria Planamenta at Roosevelt for receiving the Hilda Bonavist distinguished service award.
Congratulations to Anna, she's a huge part of enriching our students and staff lives over there. And it certainly is wonderful to have her and everyone appreciates her. So congratulations to her again. I will take a motion for 4.3.
Some more.
Second.
4.3, resolution regarding secure storage notification for states with secure storage laws. Any discussion? Any discussion? Anyone, Anna, you want to give us a rundown of what this is?
Sure. So it basically has the school district send out notification to parents on how to safely secure any firearms they have at home. And this will reduce student access, which in turn will reduce the risk of them being at school.
Okay.
And it directs the superintendent of schools to include that in when parents enroll for the first time in student handbooks and to be very proactive in this. So I have to give a shout out particularly to trustee Annie Gomez for just putting a spotlight on this. It's such a great thing. And Kathleen Witt from the county was excited to think that we were going to do that this evening, so.
And if we do pass this, I think the only other, is it the only other West Hester School District that's passed it is White Plains? Okay, so we would be second in the county.
Thank you for listening to me over and over and over again.
No, thank you for bringing some proactive ways to, for, you know, implement school safety. That's really good.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstention.
Yay.
Resolution passes. All right. Anything in?
5.1 through 5.5.
No, that's for information only.
5.1, oh no, 5.6. Oh, 5.6.
Yeah, sorry, I'll take a motion for 5.1 through 5.6.
Some more.
Second.
Um, hang on, Roger. 5.1, resolution regarding disposal of translation equipment central district. 5.2, resolution regarding award of bid park early childhood center second floor addition. 5.3, resolution regarding award of bid 2023-2024 nursing supplies. 5.4, resolution regarding agreement with the Boys and Girls Club of New Rochelle. 5.5, resolution regarding interfund transfers. 5.6, claims paid and audited. Any discussion?
I'd like to just kind of address 5.3 for the nursing supplies. So, you know, I know I sent in some questions about this and probably some responses on this one as well. But I guess the question is, did we have, was there any point in time that we had any shortages of supplies for, for our nursing staff?
No, I spoke to Alita. Obviously, we were short-staffed in the district office for our purchasing clerk. And when it came to our assistant superintendent business attention, she basically sent out a memo to everybody, like, if you can purchase supplies off another bid list, but individually, if you find a product you need, she will absolutely approve immediately individual purchase orders. By having a major bid like that, it just makes it easier to do major bulk. But that was the way we mitigated the situation at the time. So everybody had what they needed.
And typical purchasing time for something like this is, is it pretty quick usually?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And typically, once the board approves a, once, once a community has an approved budget, purchase order request can go into the financial management system based on the upcoming budget. And then they're issued and processed and sent out, and then materials checked in throughout the summer. So that's the process here. But again, as the board is aware, we had, you know, some personnel, but anyway.
Strictly, this was all strictly, this is, this is an anomaly relative to.
Correct, correct.
Okay, so this is more of just centered around
Yeah.
the personnel issue.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstention. One second. Anything 6.1 through 6.14 that anyone would like to break out? I'll take a motion for 6.1 through 6.14.
Some more.
Second. 6.1, resolution regarding administrative staff resignations. 6.2, resolution regarding civil service staff resignation. 6.3, resolution regarding support staff resignation. 6.4, resolution regarding professional staff appointments. 6.5, resolution regarding civil staff appointments. 6.6, resolution regarding support staff appointments. 6.7, resolution regarding bus attendant appointments. 6.8, resolution regarding professional staff appointments before and after school programs. 6.9, resolution regarding civil service staff appointments before and after school programs. 6.10, resolution regarding support staff appointments before and after school programs. 6.11, resolution regarding per diem substitute removals. 6.12, resolution regarding per diem substitute appointments. 6.13, resolution regarding APPR, annual professional performance review accountability. 6.14, resolution regarding approval of school volunteers. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstention. Okay, now we have our second audience recognition public comment guidelines. There's no one in the audience in person. Is there anyone in the audience virtually? Angela says no. We'll now move on to board reports and dialogue. Just have a few quick things on my list. Two of them, I'm probably gonna defer until the next meeting that Ilie is here because I wanted to, I know we have a consensus on a new board member onboarding committee, so we'll have to form that and then decide who's on the committee. But it should be recorded by the clerk and everything, so we'll do that later. And then is there interest in forming a calendar committee? I know that was something that came up at the beginning of the year as a possibility.
Sorry. I thought when we discussed that one, we were going to get insight from the administration on that for the calendar versus like the board was gonna liaise with the district on that one. Just because I'm not sure the board could make that decision in isolation without BOSI's calendars and everything else that goes on.
Oh, right, 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 okay. I just, I didn't, I know we're probably eventually coming up to a time in the next few months. I don't want us to catch it, catch us off guard, so.
So I'd be more than happy to, obviously I will work with the superintendents and I was the calendar person for 25 years. So I actually understand the regs around it a lot. So I'm happy to put forth it and then ask whatever members of the board want to serve on that committee with me to kind of process through it and what it looks like.
Yeah, I mean, my big concern just is, right, with, with BOSI's instruction, where we lose the days when we're out and they're in and they're out and we're in. And so, you know, how do we try to move the whole region to a more inclusive calendar at the end of the day? That's gonna be the challenge. And in short of being able to do that, how do we ensure instruction for our students?
So for.
I know, Mary.
Please remind, please, like, don't, don't hesitate to bring it up again, a dialogue, like, where are we on that thing? I was hoping, Melissa, you would report back to us on your trip.
Sure, I mean, I wanted to.
I'm like kind of excited about it. I'm excited to hear about it.
Getting late, but I'll give you a quick synopsis. I can also share some resources, not all of the workshops provided resources, but some did. And some it might be a little hard out of context to kind of understand, but it was great. The opening keynote was, what's her name? I wrote it down. It was Nantombi Naomi Tutu, the opening keynote speaker. She's the daughter of arch, South African Archbishop Desmond Tutu. Her theme was about shared humanity and just some of the things that she has gathered in her perspective as now being a bishop herself and her father and growing up in apartheid South Africa and what that has taught her in terms of, you know, things of diversity and equity, diversity of thought, experience, ethnicity and all of that. I'll go to the end and I'll get to the middle, but the closing keynote was Liz Murray, who some of you may know or be familiar with, a, that they did a Lifetime movie about her, A Homeless Harvard. And she gave a speech where the thesis was on mentorship and the power of mentorship and the impact that that had on her life. And she does a lot of work in that area as well, bringing mentorship to students to enhance, you know, their success during and after school, their school careers. I attended a few workshops. One, the last one I attended was called Let's Not Freak Out About AI. And the guy was really nonchalant. He was kind of comforting his approach about that. But there was a lot of kind of good nuggets in there about just acknowledging that kind of like the cart is before the horse with a lot of things around ethics with AI, but just putting things into perspective about some of the things along the way that we've kind of had anxiety about in, in education world and how we dealt with that and we can deal with this the same way, just the same, you know, they pointed out how when Google Translate came out, you know, a lot of, you know, educators that teach language and were first a little skeptic, but then once things kind of rolled out, it really didn't impact education. So it was really about just acknowledging the technology, acknowledging some of the pros, not showing, shying away from the cons and seeing that how that fits into the overall scope of whatever your existing standards are around education, right? So just really kind of a comforting sense of, yes, there are a lot of ethical things to get right with AI, but there are some, some pros to it and there are also some ways we can regulate that within our districts.
I agree.
I also attended one around school board ethics and conflicts of interest. And that was just a really kind of overview of just standards. And I think we can unpack that more as we go forward with our retreat, our attempts to do our other retreat. Strategies for effective board meetings. What else did I go to? Oh, suspension disproportion, disproportionality disrupting bias-based beliefs. And that was a really good presentation on just some of the ways to kind of unpack data on how to approach what you're seeing in the data and just kind of the overall trends that have existed throughout public education unfortunately, and ways to kind of approach it differently, especially when you're using data to do that. So I thought that was a really good workshop. And that one didn't get any slides, but it was a really, it wasn't really good.
Oh, what's the info?
So I'll try to summarize all this stuff more coherently and put slides and stuff. And I guess I'll just put it in a drive and share the link and you all can just go in and unpack it. And as the, we roll out more meetings, if you, you know, want to discuss anything further, you know, I can give more context to that as well. But it was a very, very, you know, good trip to the edge of New York. You know, and the weather was quite mild like it was down here, so I was happy about that. And, yeah, it was a lot, it was a lot to unpack and I'm glad I went. I'm glad I'm able to kind of bring back some perspective for the board and as we move ahead.
Thank you very much for attending and for sharing out. Did you get to see the falls?
I didn't. It was just so much to, you know, the convention itself is just so jam-packed with stuff. And it's like, where would I find the time or the energy, right? Like, the days are like packed. And if you're someone who's there and eager to learn and you just kind of, you know, see what other districts are dealing with. And I also went to the expo and there were some pretty good vendors there as well. I have some information to share out about that. Some really interested approaches that other districts are doing, especially around exit kind of surveys for students, right? Like when students graduate, we have sort of like a data point we never really kind of tap into about different experiences or different life after high school and that track that they're on and things like that. So I thought that was a really interesting consideration for us to kind of integrate with the data that we're already kind of gathering to see as, as far as, you know, retrospective type of approach. Yes.
Awesome, thank you so much. In terms of committees, I know there's a communications committee meeting. Can you take that one? I can talk. These are just from my little notes. There were plenty of people there last time, mostly community members. We talked a little bit about some communications changes that might be happening. We're working, Nicole was working on getting an OBLAST to go out completely in Spanish so that, you know, if you're a family who has indicated that you prefer communication in Spanish, you get one just in Spanish so that we have kind of two separate ones, so we don't have to sift through, you know, all the English if you don't speak English or all the Spanish if you don't speak Spanish. Students were there and they were reporting as part of their communications club how they're making their videos accessible in Spanish. They have bilingual students translate themselves or they might add in Spanish captions. Nicole solicited and received some feedback from the community members on the community, community about OBLASTs. There was a lot of sharing there. People had big feelings about how they want to be receiving those emails. Nicole's always looking for that kind of feedback.
that kind of feedback. She, there was a big discussion about hiring a consultant to assist with the rebranding process that would be associated with a potential new mascot. And after a lot of back and forth talk, it was, I think, mostly decided that that was a wise direction to go in.
Sorry, I didn't understand that, the mascot. Can you clarify?
Well, there's been talk beginning from the students, and so this has been a subject area of great discussion within the Communications Committee about potentially adding a mascot.
Right. The lion, right?
Potentially, yes. That's what the students have, have centered around, a lion mascot, but still the pride as our, like, team name.
Moniker.
But the, the consensus was to hire a consultant to assist in the rebranding process, to give us an idea of what that would really entail, what that whole process should look like as far as engaging the community, and, you know, how we would go even go about that. What kind of logo would it look like? Would it be male or female? Could it be both? If it's a pride, it's more, you know, it really, it really did get quite, you know, everybody shared their feelings. And I think that consensus at the end was like, we need some outside help on that.
I'm, I'm sorry. So, it was, we need outside help to, is that something that the committee itself could do without a consultant?
No.
No. It's beyond really the...
We need like a professional.
Professional.
Okay.
Has any student group aside from the Athletic Leadership Council at the high school been involved with this at all?
Well, I know there's communications, students who are involved with the communications that are also present at the, at those meetings, you know, and it's kind of like a revolving door of students at times because, you know, they have all their other activities that they do. So...
Totally get it.
Representatives from there. And I know that if you ask those athletic club students, they're going to tell you that they've already surveyed their own student body to get that. And I think there's a general understanding that it would still be so early in the process, the beginning of the process, that we, there wasn't a consensus that we're locked into a lion, okay? If I could...
Yeah, no, I mean, listen, when we, when we did the, at the leadership course and the board meeting, they presented, the question I asked at the time was, why is this just athletics leadership? Shouldn't we have a leadership across the board? And the students all responded, yes, it should be across the board. But yet, we only have this athletic leadership program. My concern is if, you know, if there's really a thrust for the mascot, is this a really small group at the end of the day, and we're just missing the bigger picture on this? But I think, you know, the question of moving this forward or not, really, I think needs to, we need to be certain that this is coming from a large swath, and that the arts has weighed in, and all the groups have weighed in at the end of the day. And I'm not getting the sense from the committee.
There have been. I know Kate Matthews is on that committee, and she's been president, present at some of the meetings around it too, and she, she's seen...
I'm sorry, who was that?
Kate Matthews.
Oh, Kate, was that, well...
Yeah.
I just, you know, who was the sample survey? Like, who, you know, who's the group?
Right, right. And that, well, that was one of the things that, like, I feel like a consultant would talk us through that kind of thing. That's, that's kind of where we landed on that, when we talked about getting community feedback and students...
Like an official poll, rolling it school-wide and...
Yes, yes. Getting all different groups together.
Yes, that would be the next step as far as, you know...
Okay.
Yeah, the consultant would, that's, like, companies spend millions of dollars and years and years and years of this. So, the point is, we're not going to spend a million dollars and years and years.
Right.
And I don't remember the timeline we were trying to shoot for, for it. But the point was, the consultant would come in and then say, yeah, okay, step one is, maybe it's poll this, and then we're going to look at the legalities, and then we're going to see what the other districts do.
We're going to bring it out to the community, get the community's input.
Yeah. Right, no, I mean, I know other districts in my work in West, but have done this. This is not a small initiative.
No.
Right. And I think that there was recognition from the...
And I just am asking these questions because, you know, I think we've got a lot on the table. And while I do think this is something we should engage with, I think we have some pressing needs to address too. And I just don't want to see resources getting stretched then.
I don't disagree with what you're saying, but at the same time, I do think this is also part and parcel with, with the, with, kind of like bringing together, kind of like a unified and harmonized district altogether. Everybody's got logos in, in different places. And I would rather see us come together as one in whether, whatever we rally around, because it's not the same everywhere.
It may be that a consultant comes in and says, this is going to take this amount of time and this amount of dollars. And then we decide, like, well, we're just going to, we can't do that right now, you know? But we need to hear from a professional to tell us that first.
No, and I totally agree and appreciate that. I would say, knowing like what happened in Chavikwa when they went with their tree and the number of branches on the tree and all these things, like, this can take on a very big life of its own. And you've got to engage the community in a decent, a very big way on this.
Yeah, and I think the students feel very, very passionately and strongly that they want a, a mascot, not just the letter. And it's sort of, I, we're definitely in a position where, you know, they have put in a lot of effort, a lot of initiative, a lot of legwork, and we totally want to respect that. And then really just say to them, okay, well, like, here's what the next step would be in that. And I, I feel like we definitely at this juncture have to explore what that next step is. And if that next step is something that is a two-year process, and then we come back and say, okay, this is going to be a two-year process, how do we want to prioritize this with everything else? Great, right? But I, I do think they have made it clear and are impassioned that, that they want us to take this next step out.
My question remains just is, how big is the day?
I can't answer, I can't answer the question. I wasn't, I know this was going on last year.
That's what the consultant's going to be engaging. So, I mean, I think this is right now where I think this isn't something we should be debating at this point. I think it's just, let's let this process move forward, and let's, you know, with, with the, the expectation that the consultant will do what's needed to engage the broader audience.
All right. Any, go ahead.
The Policy Committee, Matt. And we had a lot going on. So, my Policy Committee members chime in if my notes are lacking. I think we would have probably voted on some of this stuff tonight, because we did choose to move forward with the first read with some of it. But I think because with Alita and Illy not here and with the big presentations tonight, it didn't make sense on the agenda. But to come back, we had talked about student dismissal policy. And that's one I wanted to bring up first because we had already discussed it once here and kind of sent it back. We got some advice from the lawyer that said basically that we need to be consistent, but we weren't totally clear on what the lawyer's notes were. So, we sent that back for them to work on it. So, we're still not, we didn't get the clarity that we kind of wanted. So, that's not ready to come back yet. There was policy number 5420, which was about epinephrine being stocked in all buildings and being administered by trained staff. And it would only apply in school buildings. Let's see. And so, there was some updated forms related to that, like, basically, our policy has forms that the district is meant to be using, and they haven't been using them in a long time, and they updated them a long time ago. So, they wanted to update the forms that went with it. So, the district has already actually been using it. So, that would have been a change in policy that would match, a change in policy to match our current practice. 5405, we discussed wellness policy. There were no substantive changes to that, just an update in language because it referred to, it was like lunch-related, and it referred to having a cashless checkout. And that language was inaccurate because we do accept cash. And that's all that policy change really was. We discussed a red, a red flag law, which we had, I think, had we discussed that one at the board table? And then we were really unclear about how our safety protocols, so a red flag law is when a school district can initiate a response if there's a reason to believe that a student might have some sort of imminent danger to restrict their access to guns. And so, there were some questions, I think, at the board table about how our policy interacted with law enforcement. And so, there was some clarifying stuff added to that policy, and we agreed to send that out for our first read, so I'd expect that at some point. We had discussed at the board table, the construction policy, 7365. And at the board table, we had decided that we wanted to change the policy to decrease the amount of time, the, the amount of notice that we would have to give for construction projects to allow for greater flexibility. Jared Mans was at that meeting. He said, that sounds good to me. So, we can expect that to come back again later. I think that's just about it. Did I get it all, Melissa? I don't know if you were taking, it's like, if I can decipher my notes.
I was taking notes.
If you can decipher your notes better than I can decipher mine.
So, also with the Student Health Services, I think, we also, there was just a small change in language around the training that's, that's given. I think it was real technical about video, where it's not always consistent with video. So, just making sure it's, training will be done every year, not necessarily because that's the whole...
And there were, there were changes, like, there were links to government websites that no longer work, so the links have changed. Do you remember that?
I, yep, I'm into that.
Yep, I'm sorry. I'm, I apologize.
But you got it.
It's late, Melissa.
I know. Feel, feel free to share the responsibility, share it out. I know you've taken the initiative the past couple of meetings. I'm happy to help you. But yeah, and you've pretty much covered it. I think you touched on the, what we processed with the cellia too, right?
Yeah, we talked about the McKinney-Vento.
Yeah.
Just our paperwork related to that. So, it was paperwork related to how we identify students who might qualify for certain services or programs because of their statuses homeless, and how we catch all those students, what qualifies as, you know, quote-unquote homeless according to the state might not be, you know, a person who does not consider themselves homeless may still qualify for these programs. So, how do we create...
So, basically, it was a document that didn't exist that was now created to make sure that we're being compliant with McKinney-Vento law, to make sure that families know exactly all the categories that go into qualifying as unhoused, to make sure that we are doing our due diligence to provide education to students in the district who fall under those particular legal categories of still being able to attend school here in the Austin School District.
Right. The intention to be catching anybody who may have previously slipped through the cracks.
Or I would say informing people.
Yeah.
That these, these different categories exist. And, you know, for me personally, I think in the discussion as well, there were also, being able to identify this helps us identify those families that need resources, which in turn increase quality of life, which in turn are alleviate mental health kind of concerns and resources that might pop up in those populations as well. So, it's a way to kind of really provide a, a real culture of care around families that fall under this particular umbrella without some kind of feeling, you know, ostracized or unsupported, or, you know, whatever the feelings that might come out of that. So, it's really great that we're getting up to speed with that, especially to kind of mirror some of the other, you know, efforts that we have as a district that we're barking on in terms of residency and things like that, to make sure that we are being compliant with all the standards that fall within that.
And correct me if I'm wrong, that would, that would be new to our policy.
Yes.
But that's not included in there right now. We have obviously policy related to McKinney-Vento Act, but not this attachment.
Not this particular document.
Right.
This document doesn't exist to give to families.
And then that document would be utilized at the time of registration.
Yes.
So, we're in the process of, a meeting with the cellia actually tomorrow morning on it.
Well, the Policy Committee, I don't, I don't recall how often you meet.
Every, we've been trying every three weeks.
We try to make it twice a month. We, we did it once for October because it was jam-packed. But yeah, we want to unpack a lot. And we, oh, I know where you're getting at. We did bring up that we want to put on the next agenda to discuss the public comment. So, it's on, it's on our next agenda.
Yeah, so we told Alita, like, just get something from our lawyers. So, we, that did come up, but we didn't land anywhere. We just expressed...
It's on the agenda for next meeting.
We just didn't express an interest in putting it on the agenda. So, now it's on the agenda.
We'll name it after you.
Well, it's not just on the agenda. We, we've given the directive to go to camp.
Right, right.
So, get the feedback we need so we can discuss it in detail at the next meeting.
Yes. So, it's in the works. It's coming down the pike. Yes.
Great. All right. Any other board dialogue? Good dialogue, too. Great meeting. All right. I will take a motion to enter into executive session to discuss matters between each particular employee or employees and a matter that will fall under FERBA guidelines. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Before we go, Angela, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for helping us with this new tech.
Thank you, Angela. Thank you, thank you. Much appreciated.
Who moved to go into exec?
I did.
I'm sorry, Annie. And who's...